Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for February 28, 2023. First item is appeals calendar. This is a second call item from yesterday, 2022 to a 728 Court Street, Brooklyn.
All right, so we were waiting for sign off from the fire department. And we just received a sign off, a conditional letter of no objection from fire department. And there were several conditions associated with it. That the condition, uh, conditions are installing an above ground flammable and combustible liquid storage tank indoor on, uh, indoors unless compliant with section forty-two dash twenty-seven of the zoning resolution, uh, performance standards regulating fire and exposed, uh, explosive hazards and all other applicable laws, rules and regulations. Second, store flammable liquids in basements, cellars or other areas below grade. Third, um, use of transport containers as stationary storage tanks, both to permit the dispensing and mixing of any flammable and combustible liquids on the premise. And fifth, um, to permit fleet fueling operations at this, at these premises, basically fire department saying for, um, uh, unless, uh, otherwise approved by fire department, um, or approved in connection with fire department sites. It should be unlawful to have these following five elements. So based on that, fire department Bureau of Fire Prevention, um, reviewed it and, um, and it was reviewed by the Bureau of Operation, uh, Operations City Planning Unit, um, to review of access and hydrant locations. So based on that, a conditional letter of no objection has been issued. That's what we were waiting for. Um, and any correct questions and comments? I guess we are going to take a vote to close during the public review. Um, session and Chief Daly can, um, discuss, um, any, anything that we may have missed or any other clarification. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay, thank you. And I want to thank the fire department for, um, staying on top of this and responding to all of our concerns. Thank you. Um, let's move on to the next case.
So are we closing?
No, we'll close it at the public hearing.
Okay, fine. I'm sorry, I just had to email something. So, okay, next item is continued hearings, item number nineteen, twenty eighteen, one eighty-eight A and one eighty-nine A. This is one ninety-four, twenty-eight, one ninety-four, thirty-two, Downton Avenue, Queens.
Okay, um, as a follow-up to the last hearing that was held on, on December of twenty twenty-two, the applicant states that the site safety, um, uh, the, the safety maintenance work is nearing completion. Um, stop work order was partially rescinded in November of twenty twenty-two, and the site has been cleared of garbage. Um, the, the garbage has been removed from, uh, inside the building and applicant has also provided photos of the cleanup and the ceiling of the property that is in progress. Uh, the property owner is also in the process of fixing the fences. Um, the owner will be repairing the standpipe and, uh, uh, per fire department instruction. Also, uh, we had asked the applicant to provide a timeline of what it would take to get everything done. So I expect to hear from the, um, applicant during the public, uh, hearing period as to the timeframe. And, um, based on that, we will, um, make a decision, uh, and the applicant has also submitted a request to withdraw GCL thirty-six. Any questions or comments commissioners on this? Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the next case.
Item number twenty, twenty, twenty-one, forty-eight A to twenty, twenty-one, forty-nine A. This is forty-two, seventy-two Schmick Avenue, Staten Island.
Okay, um, based on the comments raised at the last initial, uh, hearing that was held on, um, January twenty-fourth, the applicant has provided its response. Um, specifically that gates are not proposed at present, and if any gates are to be proposed, it would be installed per fire department requirement. And the applicant states that the builder's pavement plan approval for a city on Red Court Street would be the same as for a, um, map city street. This was a question I had, uh, trying to understand if there is any different and said it's the same. Uh, we have received a letter of no objection from fire department. Um, so be, um, while I'm satisfied with the responses provided, um, there was still an outstanding issue with regards to environmental. And the applicant, um, has submitted an application for a type two. Um, the applicant needs to follow the requirements and, uh, needs to have a sign up from the board. Uh, this, uh, and, um, needs to follow the requirement of the secret review process for it to receive a sign up from the board for the, uh, application. And I would think the lack of resolution of the secret review process, um, in my mind would result in a dismissal of the application for lack of prosecution. Um, and this is not a discussion that we need to have with the applicant during the, uh, public hearing. It is, uh, something the applicant needs to resolve with, uh, our secret representative. Any, uh, questions or comments on this from the commissioners? Um, does our executive director or deputy counsel or, uh, Tracy, do you want to add anything? That I need to be aware of?
I have no comment.
Okay, all right.
No comment.
You chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I, um, I, I just wanna mention something that we, I looked at the, the feedback from the community board regarding their vote. Uh, was kind of split, and I, I saw that they have some concerns and I'm, I'm wondering whether the applicant tried to get in touch with them, mitigate these concerns. If, if the applicant has done so, uh, I would like him to, like, update us on that. Thank you.
Okay. Um. I, yeah, that was, that's a fine, I think, I think the applicant has stated something last time, or maybe it was our project manager who updated us, but I will let the applicant.
Last time, we didn't know the reason for the split food, actually.
Okay. Yeah, I, my understanding is it may be more of the fact that, um, this is very close to, uh, this is the only path from the residential portion and the concern the community board has the, um, that, uh, this, the, the, uh, two large warehouses would result in lot of vehicular traffic, mostly truck traffic. And, uh, that may result in, uh, a lot of traffic backup and further delay, uh, vehicular circulation. That's kind of what I seem to understand. But I would let the applicant, um, clarify that. Thank you.
They are concerned about the number of, of tenants, I believe, that's gonna go inside the warehouse. And if, if the applicant got in touch with them and mitigated that, we would like to know, like, if he assured them that it's gonna be limited number of tenants that's gonna be allowed in the.
Well, well, I think we need to be careful on this, this, because this is, apart from it not being on a map street, the use is permitted as of right. And, and, um, so the density wise and the nu- number of tenants, none of those are before us for review, right?
I'm not, I'm not asking the applicant to do, I'm, what I'm saying is if the applicant has done so, we would like to know. If there were, was some kind of communication between him and the community board regarding this issue, it's better for us as a board to know.
Yeah, I'm su- okay, I doubted though, but yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, let's go to the next case.
New cases, item number twenty-one, sorry, new cases, item number twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two, thirteen, A ninety-seven Industrial Loop, Staten Island.
Okay, um, we have received proof of service of initial filing and, uh, proof of hearing notice. Um, community board has approved this application. This is an application for a GCL, um, thirty, um, sorry, uh, GCL thirty-six. Uh, waiver to allow the development of an as-of-right one-story warehouse use fronting on, uh, industrial loop. Um, the zoning, um, sorry, excuse me. Um, as we know, industrial loop is a private roadway, two-way, it has, um, it has, we, the board in the past has approved many, uh, GCL thirty-six approvals, uh, that has been granted along, um, industrial loop. The applicant is proposing a one-story warehouse, um, with ten accessory parking spaces and a loading berth. And, um, my only comment is that the, the width of the sidewalk is not clear from the diagram. Uh, the, uh, it should be minimum of, uh, five foot, uh, width. And, uh, I don't think I saw any, um, builder's pavement plan, um, for the, uh, improvement to the roadwork. Um, so I, those were my comments on this application. Um, vice chair Shibeta?
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yep.
Um, I just, just update the board that Tracy could speak to it. So this also was some, uh, an application under, uh, uh, secret review. And this one has been determined to be a type two.
Okay.
So the applicant was just informed as of Friday. I'm not sure if, uh, if the form has been submitted yet and, and the requisite fee, but that's something we could address.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, vice chair Shibeta?
Nothing further for me.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Artley Brown?
I have no questions.
Uh, Commissioner Sheta?
I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Yun?
Uh, thank you. I have no further comments.
Okay. Okay, move on. Yes.
BZ calendar, continued hearing items, item number twenty-two, twenty eighteen, one seventy-three BZ, one twenty-eight Beach Nine Street, Queens.
This application was, uh, last heard on August eighth, uh, of twenty twenty-two. The board was generally satisfied with the revised application and, uh, believed that the findings were met. Um, the, uh, though at the last hearing, um, uh, I think Commissioner Artley Brown had asked for a clarification regarding the cap. Oh, actually, no, 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 I'm sorry, this is from an, uh, that, I think we resolved it. I'm sorry, I'm reading my notes incorrectly. Um, so the, at the previous hearing, as I said, the board found that the findings related to the variance has been met. And, um, we were waiting for a CCR sign off, so I would like to get an update from, um, our, um, uh, from Ms. Benke about any CCR status review. I know we do not have any update on DP.
Yes, um, DC, we reached out to them to see if they had any comments, um, regarding the application. Um, they had some comments which the applicant responded to, and we haven't heard anything, um, regarding they want any more information from us. Um, but WRP, the city did issue, um, revise, uh, some comments on February sixteenth, and the applicant has not, um, addressed these comments at this time.
Mm-hmm, okay. And that was on February sixteenth, you said, right?
Yes.
Okay, and that's the only outstanding issue on the, as part of the secret review?
Yes.
Um, okay. All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay. Okay, uh, next question, uh, next case please, I'm sorry.
Twenty nineteen, three oh four BZ, twenty nineteen, three oh five A, one eighty, east one hundred and thirty-second Street, the Bronx.
Okay, I think this is also very similar to the previous one. Um, at the last hearing, the board, um, um, believed that the findings were met. Uh, we were waiting for the CCR sign off, um, and we have a draft DOT sign off. And the applicant has revised the plan to include, uh, a fire department's notes, um, on the, as part of the approved site plan. I did not see the E designation language added to the plan. And the other question I had for the applicant was if there is any difference between the plan sheet number twenty-one and plan sheet number seventeen. Um, the applicant also revised the DOB objections, uh, sheet. And yesterday, um, commissioners, you must have seen a draft restrictive, restrictive deck that has been, uh, drafted, um, by the applicant regarding the private roadway. And this is, uh, something the DOT required, and it is under review at, um, uh, DOB. Uh, any update, uh, on CCR since, um, my, anything that, since yesterday, uh, Ms. Benke?
Um, not since yesterday, but on February seventeenth, DP issued more comments regarding air quality.
Okay, are these extensive?
Um, there are more than one, so, um, they do need to be addressed, I believe.
Are those related to the E designation?
No, um, they actually, there, it was regarding the industrial source analysis.
Okay. Okay. Uh, okay.
Hmm, and mobile, and mobile as well.
Okay, so it's all air quality related, um? Okay. Thank you.
I believe, I believe they're working on a response, but they can update us.
Yes, yes. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay, thank you, Ms. Benke. Uh, let's go to the next case.
Item number twenty-four, twenty, twenty-one, eighty-three BZ, eighty dash seventy-four, hundred eighty-eight Street, Queens.
Okay, the initial hearing was held on October third, uh, the revised submission, um, response to, uh, the board's comments that were raised, especially with regards to the, um, program space. Um, the drawings have been, uh, in a revised, however, I do have comments with regards to the drawings. Uh, first of all, um, the, in the drawing, please indicate the section lines and the plans, indicate the stair run directions from the plan, uh, from the plans. It seems a stair A would provide access to the roof and not stair B. And on the second floor stair B plan has a, has a, a set of stairs that's going to the roof, though, um, in the response letter, it states that stair B bulkhead has been removed. So I need some clarification on that. Uh, need a note to the cellar floor plan that kitchen shall only be, um, used for warming purposes. It's a warming kitchen. And catering and banquet use shall not be permitted. Um, provide a residential quality fence along the front lot line or, um, or in-ground planting like the, uh, shrubs. Um, this is also to keep the con- and, and the reason I'm asking for this is to, okay, also to keep the congregants within the subject lot line when gathering outside the synagogue. Um, put a note on the plan that all planting on the subject lot, especially along the lot line, shall be in-ground planting that is minimum four foot deep and four foot wide, and, um, applicant should provide a detail of the landscaping. The treatment of the masonry wall along the residential lot line shall be consistent with the residential context. Um, it should be nicely painted and maintained. It shouldn't look like an industrial, um, uh, and just a cinder block type of thing. With regards to the programmatic need, um, the applicant has removed the gym from the sub-seller. Uh, it has been eliminated from the program. Uh, the roof of the second floor and, uh, the rooftop, uh, will no longer be accessible to, uh, congregants. Uh, notes have been added to the plan to that effect, and, uh, no sound amplification, no lights, other than emergency lights will be provided. Um, also, the elevator will not have access to the roof. Um, the revised programmatic need, uh, responds to most of the comments raised at the last hearing. However, um, the programmatic need, uh, still lacks clarity with regards to the use of the administrative office space. Uh, and my question is, will it be used all seven days of the week? And what will be the duration of the use for, uh, each day? Uh, the board had asked for a room utilization, uh, study for the weekdays, and I don't believe that was provided. With regards to the neighborhood character, um, residential lot line has been widened, um, the, sorry, the, uh, the, uh, the side lot line along the residential lot line has been widened from eight foot to twelve feet by moving the building towards Trune, uh, Road. The revised plan, uh, will include a six-foot-high masonry wall along, along, uh, residential lot line and, uh, will provide, uh, green in-ground landscaping. The stair and the elevator bulkheads have been reduced and moved away from the lot lines. Um, one of the stair bulkhead, which is stair B, has been removed. Um, but I had the question that I raised in the drawings, because there is a, the way the drawing reads and the statement, um, there is a little bit of a mismatch. Um, the windows facing the residential lot lines will be, um, unoperable, um, and opaque. And the remaining operable windows will maintain an STC rating of twenty-eight. Um, also had asked the applicant to provide a high study, uh, height study map, uh, which I don't believe was provided. Um, so the applicant, I do appreciate the applicant, uh, making, uh, these changes. These are significant changes. Um, however, I have some outstanding questions, and, um, so the elements of N, um, uh, D and E have still not been responded to, uh, and also the programmatic elements, and there are still some questions I have. I also want to bring it to your attention that there is an opposition group. Though, um, the group has not yet for formally filed any legal documents and do not have a legal representation. Um, the, the group intends to submit and appear before the board. Um, so I don't know whether that will be today or it would be at a subsequent hearing. Um, but, um, we shall see. Um, commi- uh, vice chair Shibeta?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Did we receive a new FAR study?
I don't think so, no.
So I would ask, uh, and I would ask for that, uh, and, um, or I, I, I don't think we received a height study either.
No.
So I'd ask for those two. I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Commissioner Artley Brown?
Um, my question originally had to do with the gym and what type of program it was gonna be. And I was concerned because it seemed like it was going to be a program that was open to the community, which would have not really gone towards satisfying the programmatic needs of the synagogue itself, because it would have been open to everyone. So I'm glad that they have removed that from the plans. And as that was my only serious question about this, I have no other issues.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Sheta, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I confirmed that I, I didn't see a room utilization study. I recall that the board, uh, requested that. And, and I agree with the rest of your comments, and I have nothing further to add for now. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Uh, Commissioner Yun?
Uh, thank you. Um, I just want to note, there is a room utilization study that was provided in June, stated June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, but it's quite sparse. So maybe to correct the record is that we asked for something that actually talked about every room, including the administrative offices, which this one does not. Um, to Vice Chair's point about the height study, the height is technically as-of-right. It's just the FAR that, uh, they're seeking a waiver, and I think the proposal is for point eight-three over a point-five max permitted. So I don't know that we need the height study, given that it's as-of-right, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but I do think the FAR study would be helpful.
Oh, you're right, Commissioner Yun. Um, I think, if I'm seeing to remember, the reason I'd ask for the height study is because, um, I have to go back to my note, but that's a good point. Um, it is, the height is as-of-right, but it's the FAR that's driving the height. And, um, so we were trying to see whether the, okay, this is coming back to me. Is that because there was so much of sub-seller and seller-related uses, and the question was, can some of the uses not, uh, uh, above ground be located below grade to reduce, uh, the FAR and their, also the height and, uh, and the applicant had submitted some photographs of, uh, the homes in the area, which were very high, um, uh, or, or appeared tall compared to the immediate context, uh, stating that these homes were built, uh, on a higher elevation. And, uh, that also results to the added height. And so it was kind of comparing the height and the bulk to the, um, the FAR to the height of the building. I think that's where it was coming from. So that's where the question. So yes, I think if the FAR is the critical part of it. And it is very difficult to measure the FAR without the hi- uh, in the absence of a height. So maybe that's why those two were balanced, but you're right. The height i- is an as-of-right, that's not being asked, uh, a waiver of. Um, but the applicant needs to clarify that how the proposed building fits into the context. And these are the measures that are used, and the FAR is definitely, um, is a waiver that the applicant is seeking.
Right, right. And, um, yes, with the gym removal, I think that was one of also my concerns with the initial proposal, so, um, similar to Commissioner Artley Brown. So, um, those are my only comments on this case.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next case.
Okay, next item is twenty twenty-two, fourteen BZ, nineteen sixty-one.
Um, Ms. Mathias, um, you need to state.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, um, item number twenty-five, twenty, twenty-two, fourteen BZ, nineteen sixty-one, east one, uh, east twenty-first Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, um, just give me a second, I'm, I'm. Okay, the applicant has provided the required information to conduct, um, our review. Um, following information was provided regarding FAR, lot coverage, rear yard, and the applicant also revised a statement of, uh, fact. Um, the applicant is proposing one point oh-three FAR of four thousand, uh, eleven, uh, hundred, uh, square foot of, uh, building. Based on the FAR study, the, uh, majority of the existing and all of the BSA-approved development do not exceed one FAR. The proposed floor area is more than the built neighborhood context. So, um, I'm going to direct the applicant to reduce the FAR to less than one, um, uh, one FAR. Based on ZOLA information, um, all the homes that were enlarged to point nine-nine FAR have less than four thousand square foot of gross floor area, whereas the proposed zoning floor area exceeds that. And this is just, the gross floor area is, um, the, if the gross floor is four thousand, the zoning floor area is going to be less. So in this case, the applicant is proposing a zoning floor area that exceeds the gross floor area. Also, the lot size in the study, uh, vary from two thousand square foot to four thousand square foot. The subject lot is generously larger compared to some of the other, uh, zoning lots. The subject lot is four thousand square feet, and, uh, therefore the enlargement that is permitted, um, you know, the, so the comparing the other lots where enlargements were permitted, except for one of the lots, uh, sixty-eight, um, twenty-eight block, lot thirty-one. All of the lots are, uh, smaller in size. So the enlargement on those, while that may, uh, add to point nine-nine, the, as I mentioned, the total floor area is much less the zoning floor area than what is being proposed. So, um, the ask of a one-point-oh-three FAR is a lot for, uh, based on the neighborhood context. Um, and it needs to come down to less than one FAR. That, that's my primary comment on this one. Vice Chair Shibeta?
Share your comments. I have nothing further.
I didn't hear the first part.
I share your comments, Chair. I have nothing further.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Artley Brown?
I have no comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I second your comments. I did look at the FAR study, and I can see that the maximum FAR in the, in the neighborhood is, is one. And the typical is between point nine and one, and that's why I, uh, I support your comment regarding reducing the FAR, the proposed FAR to, um, to maximum one. Thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I also agree with that, and I have no further comments.
Thank you all. Okay.
Okay, okay, next item is item number twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two thirty-one BZ three thirty-seven, east sixty-fourth street, Manhattan.
Okay. I'm just scrolling through my notes. The application was last heard in December of twenty-twenty-two. Minor changes were requested to the plan to clarify the pre-existing non-compliance areas and areas needing waivers and to clarify the bulkhead analysis. Also, the proposed material for the bulkhead has been indicated. Um, the applicant has confirmed that the outdoor patios, um, in the rear and, uh, at the, at the cellar level and the one on the fifth floor, the mezzanine outdoor terrace will not be used for gathering and notes have been added to the plan. Um, we just received a hazmat sign-off, uh, right? Yes. And, um, any other?
Final sign-off.
That, so, okay, so we have all the, uh, sign-ups on the secret part?
Yes, we might want a few notes on the plans based on the sign-off and to finalize the EAS, but as far as that, uh, secret is closed otherwise.
Okay, wonderful. Great, so I think this application i- it should be ready to close today, uh, during public hearing. Um, we have the hazmat sign-off on, uh, some notes needs to be added to the plan. Okay. Okay, any, um, questions or comments, Commissioner, um, Vice Chair Shibeta, do you have any comments or questions? No? Okay, alright, uh, none of, I don't think none of the commissioners have any questions. Um, alright, let's move on to the new case.
Okay, item number twenty-seven, new cases, twenty-twenty-two forty-one BZ, one twenty-two oh-five Merrick Boulevard, Queens.
I'm just opening up the plans. Um, we have received proof of service of initial filing and proof of hearing notice. Uh, community board has, uh, unanimously, uh, disapproved, uh, the application. Um, this is an application for a special permit pursuant to zoning resolution section seventy-three dash two forty-three to permit a drive-through operation for an eating and drinking establishment. Um, this is an irregular L-shaped, uh, corner lot um, with frontages, uh, on Merrick Boulevard and Basely, um, Boulevard. The applicant is proposed, uh, currently it is used as a gas station. The applicant is proposing, uh, a new use, um, uh, um, an eating and drinking establishment, um, with a drive-through facility. This would be a Starbucks establishment. And, uh, it, um, so my, I have a couple of questions. In the statement of facts, um, the applicant states that the hour of operations will be five AM to eight, ten AM as drive-through only. Um, I need to under, I, I need to understand the hours of operation. Is the drive-through only going to be from that period? And after that, there won't be any drive-through? Or was it a typo? It, it meant five AM to ten PM? Um, and, uh, so would like that clarification. Uh, so I want to go straight into the findings of section seventy-three dash two forty-three. Um, this applies to C-one-three zoning districts for, uh, eating and drinking establishments, uh, with capacity of two hundred or less. This proposed eating and drinking establishment will be primarily, uh, a drive-through facility. Um, and the applicant states, uh, in a statement, um, that ten percent of the, um, business would be, uh, pickup. Um, there would be a pickup window, so anybody can walk, walk in, pick up, uh, pick up. But there won't be any facility for somebody to sit there and eat. And I believe that is the reason, primary reason, um, why the community board voted to disapprove this application. Um, the, and I would like the applicant to clarify why the community board vote, um, uh, disagreed, um, to approve, um, this application. Um, that is my understanding, but I would like the applicant to clarify. So with regards to the finding, finding A requires that, uh, no less than ten reservoir spaces be provided. The applicant is proposing a fourteen space, um, a reservoir lane. And, uh, there were two sets of plans. So I think DOT was looking at the older plan. Um, the most latest plan is two-nine, uh, was submitted on two-nine twenty-twenty-three. And that shows, uh, fourteen reservoir spaces. Uh, so it is definitely more than the ten required. In addition to that, the applicant is also providing uh, more than the required number of accessory parking spaces on the site. With regards to finding B, uh, minimal interference with traffic flow. Um, the drive-through would be located along Merrick Boulevard and, uh, it will be accessed primarily from Merrick Boulevard. Uh, Merrick, um, so the, there are two curb cuts and one, uh, on Merrick Boulevard and one curb cut serves as the entry to the entire facility. And there, there is another curb cut on, uh, Basely. Both Basely curb cut and the secondary curb cut on Merrick are only exit lanes. So the primary entrance would be from Merrick Boulevard and Merrick Boulevard is a major street. The entry and exit would be, uh, would be capturing the vehicular traffic that is coming through Merrick Boulevard. And, um, and Merrick Boulevard, uh, roadway, it's a divided two-lane road. So it's only the westbound vehicles that are, uh, going through Merrick Boulevard would be able to make a right turn onto the site to enter the reservoir space, um, and, and do the pickup and then exit either onto Basely or exit onto the westbound, uh, moving, um, traffic, um, going along, um, Merrick Boulevard. Um, and also the applicant has, uh, provide, proposing several traffic control signs on the side that would prohibit any, um, uh, like especially along Basely and which I believe DOT also in its comment letter, initial comment letter has said it, had stated that, uh, it did not, uh, want any vehicles to enter, uh, onto Basely and, and there be a sign provided, which the applicant has provided. Uh, with regards to finding C, that the accessory drive-through facility, uh, is fully compliant, as I stated earlier. Um, I believe for zoning, uh, probably four or five, uh, is required. The applicant is proposing nine accessory parking spaces on site. With regards to finding D, that the character of the commercially zoned street frontage, uh, uh, is, uh, is maintained and the use is oriented towards motor vehicle. As I stated, uh, earlier, um, Merrick Boulevard is the major thoroughfare which has and, and it is the major commercial thoroughfare also of in this neighborhood. Um, and the frontage of this subject site along Merrick Boulevard is about hundred and eighty feet. And, uh, both, uh, Merrick and Basely Boulevard, um, uh, have commercial overlay and commercial use is permitted. And Merrick Boulevard, especially being the major commercial corridor, has commercial use, um, running beyond from five hundred feet from the subject site with active commercial uses and also manufacturing uses, um, uh, uh, in this corridor. So, um, Merrick Boulevard, as I said, is a principal artery, um, and a major, uh, commercial thoroughfare. Um, so any traffic that is traveling through it and the use that is proposed and the drive-through would be, uh, drive-through pickup with the eating and drinking establishment would be compatible with the commercial use and manufacturing use that's located along Merrick Boulevard. Um, with regards to finding C, um, that there be no adverse impact on residences. As I stated, Merrick Boulevard is a commercial corridor. The residential use is located behind the subject site facing, um, urban place. And, uh, the applicant is, uh, proposing to have the menu board and the pickup window, uh, for the drive-through fronting on, um, Merrick Boulevard. So any of the noise-generated type of operation associated with the drive-through will not be facing the residential, uh, lot line. It would be facing the Merrick Boulevard frontage. And the distance from the residential lot line, uh, the nearest residential lot line to the menu board is about fifty feet, which is more than thirty-five feet typically that we take as, as a, uh, rule, uh, in terms of noise propagation. And, um, the rear portion of the lot would be only used for queuing, um, uh, for the drive-through. And, and there'll be a drive-by pass-through lane of, for vehicles to exit onto Basely Boulevard. Um, the applicant is also proposing, uh, a six-foot-high buff tech certain feed Allegheny High sound attenuating, uh, fence along the residential la- lot line with landscaping as a buffer. Um, I have a question, um, because in the submission package, there was an architectural, architectural testing report that was provided for, uh, Simtech TM fence. We, uh, and in this one that was reviewed, it was an eight-foot-tall fence. So I'm not sure why that was provided because that's an eight-foot tall and the proposed one is a six-foot tall. Uh, and I don't think it's a Simtech, it's a buff, uh, buff tech certain feed unless they're similar. So I would like the applicant to clarify why, uh, that document was provided and how does it help in its, uh, meeting the findings. Um, the applicant states, uh, that the drive-through speaker will always have, uh, the ABC, um, on. And it states that the active ABC with an active ABC, the outbound, um, level will be reduced to, um, fifteen DBA, uh, uh, above the ambient noise, uh, at the speaker post. Um, I would like, uh, other commissioners to weigh in on it, um, on, on this one. Um, I did not see an issue with it, uh, partly because, as I stated, um, the, both the menu board and the pickup window for the drive-through is facing Merrick Boulevard and there's the building in between. And the distance from the menu board to the residential lot line is, uh, well over thirty-five feet. It's over, uh, over fifty-five feet. Um, so I do not believe the noise would propagate, um, and be, um, a nuisance to the residents. The Lumen study shows that the light level would, uh, light level would be, um, zero-foot candle, um, at, uh, the residential property line. I would like the applicant to clarify how that is being achieved. Um, because, um, I don't know what the height of the proposed light pole is and will there be a shield that would be provided or oriented in a way that brings the light down to zero foot? Or is it a combination of all of that and the six-foot-high fence? Now, so the applicant needs to clarify that in the statement and also during the hearing. With regards to finding F, uh, that there is adequate buffering, uh, placed between the drive-through facility and the residential use. As I stated, um, there would be a, um, a six-foot-high noise attenuated open, uh, opaque fence with landscaping, landscaping that would be provided along the residential real lot line. And, uh, the applicant needs to provide, um, the width of the landscape area and that is proposed along the residential lot line. Um, that was not clear from the graphics. So those really are my comments. Overall, the project seems, uh, very, very thoughtfully designed. The layout of the site is, were well laid out and it seems to have been very responsive and, um, to the residential character and orienting the building and the uses that would generally be a nuisance away from the residential use. So I was, overall, I was satisfied with it, but these are some questions and clarifications I have for the applicant to respond to. Uh, Vice Chair, uh, Shibeta.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I do, um, I agree with, uh, most of your comments. I, I would want the applicant to clarify in certain places in the statement of facts. It says there's sixteen reservoir spaces, but in other places it does say fourteen and the plans show fourteen. Um, I appreciate the sound barrier fence. Um, I, I, again, we have, at one, the, the, the diagram showed an eight-foot fence and they claimed, and they, they state it's gonna be a six-foot fence. I just want a clarification and I want to know which fence they're actually using. Uh, I, in the plans, I didn't see a sign that states, uh, no music or beeping for the, uh, for vehicles creating their own uh, noise that would be relevant to the, that would affect the neighbors. Other than that, I do agree, uh, that it seems that, uh, they were very conscientious of the neighborhood. So I'm, I'm, I would really appreciate getting some insight as to what the community board, uh, what the community board would want, uh, to, to be satisfied with this application, if anything at all.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think there were two iterations of plans and statement of facts. Um, and I think that's where the mismatch is happening and, uh, um, and that's why I think I, I'm seeing two sets of information. The applicant needs to clarify that and it should have been clarified. Um, maybe the cover letter, I did not read the cover letter of two-three twenty-twenty-nine, maybe that um, clarifies some of them. Not really, not really. Okay. Um, yes, and I agree with you that, um, there's a sign should be added, um, to lower the volume, no beeping. Um, and, uh, from, for those cars awaiting, whether it's in the accessory parking space or in the drive-through lanes. Thanks. Um, Commissioner Ockley Brown?
I'm generally, uh, supportive of this project, but I do have a few questions. So as to the landscaping, there seems to be a landscaping patch to the west of the building and on the northern and eastern lot lines. But the landscaping is not dense near the trash enclosure nor the patch of landscaping that's just to the west of the building. So my question is, why, what drove their choice to rely on grass mostly in that landscaping pouch, which just a couple of trees? And why the landscaping isn't dense by the trash enclosure? Because to me, first of all, for the west of the building, I think they're missing out on a chance to further beautify the site. And, uh, there are a lot of fast food, um, establishments that when they do have grassy patches, they put so many beautiful flowers just to make it look like an asset to the community rather than just doing business in the community. So I just wanted to know they're thinking on that. Um, the trash enclosure, I have a question about that because it's, it'll be on the northwestern lot line adjacent to the first residential home on the back street. So my question is, why did they choose this location for the trash enclosure? And also, how will that operate? Because it's actually sitting and opening onto the pass-through lane. And the last thing was, could they give us more detail on the lighting? Because it seems like the northern fencing uh, um, the northern fencing on the lot line, there must be lighting that possibly is in the wall there because it's facing inwards. If the light spill shows inwards, but just directly behind that fence, it's zero. So it must be somehow directed, but they don't really go into detail. So it'd be helpful if they did.
Which lighting, which lighting you're specifically referring to?
The northern lot line, if you look at the light.
Okay.
The light diagram, it shows lighting coming in towards the, the pass-through lane. But it then registers zero right past the fence to the north. So leads me to think it's either inserted into the sound attenuating wall or it's got some kind of a, it's above it but has some kind of shielding that's directing the lighting. So if they could just answer that question, that would be helpful. And I have no other questions.
So I just want to go back on the trash enclosure, you know, um, the trash enclosure would be from, uh, pro- it's an as of right, I mean, regardless of the drive-through, the trash enclosure would have been required for an eating and drinking establishment. Um, I just kind of want to, uh, bring, put that on everybody's radar. Um, though the operation is gonna be primarily driven by a drive-through, uh, you know, and as of right use, the location of the trash enclosure is, um, is something in my, as I see it, is, uh, more on, it's an as of right use. Yes, I do agree, they can improve the buffering and make it less of, of a, um, objectionable noise source. Um, and that, there are ways that can be done.
True, I mean, I, I agree with you there that it is an as of right use. But still and all, if I were that person on the north side of the street and the trash enclosure was right by my rear lot line, I would want to know that the board at least explored whether or not there were other locations that were not acceptable for a trash, a trash enclosure. For instance, there could be zoning that requires it be a certain distance from the corner or the street or something like that. Because, you know, it is backing up and I gotta tell you, no matter what we do, there's always vermin associated with trash enclosures, especially with food establishments. It's almost like you, no matter how on top of it it is, you can't stop the burrowing around them.
Right, and I, I think as I'm looking, as you were saying this, I was looking at, um, the site plan and in terms of what could be the other location. So the requirement is it cannot be no, it cannot be, it has It has to be beyond fifty foot of the uh of the front lot line. Now, the lot depth of this site is sixty foot from Merrick Boulevard. And if any, any trash enclosure, where do we locate it there? It would actually affect more residential homes, in my opinion. Than where there, the applicant is proposing, because it's fronting on a commercial and um. And, and a residential, so um. The, the, the site is very narrow from that point of view, and uh so maintaining that fifty foot, and the applicant can clarify that, but as I'm just looking at it. Um, the, um, that's my first read on it, but the applicant can clarify your question, um. I'm just writing down your comments.
Oh, and I, as for the menu board issue, I have no. Issue with the menu board because it isn't directly facing residential and it is. Fifty-five feet from the lot line, not even talking about the home itself, but the lot line.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, because there's a pretty deep, these are pretty deep rear yards. So even if you were to assume a thirty foot, um, it would be more than sixty feet from the nearest window. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Um, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I, I wanna start from where my colleague ended regarding the trash enclosure. Yeah, while I understand that this is uh an as-of-right use, um, the eating and drinking uh facility. I, I would like the applicant to uh think of maybe moving the trash enclosure a little bit. To the west, if possible, just if, if you look at the Google view, the area view. That when the fence turns up and then goes left. This is like the end of the residential area and, and beyond that, it's, it's commercial, so I'm, I'm not sure if. If the design of the island could be tweaked and, and then the, the landscaping area could be widened a little bit to accommodate that fashion closure. I, I don't wanna design it for them, but they can look into that. If it's possible. That's, that's, that would be much better than the current situation. The other point I wanna touch on is the noise.
You mean current or proposed situation?
The currently proposed one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Uh, the second point I wanna touch on is, is the noise. Uh, yes, I do agree. Actually, I, I was mistaken regarding the, the distance between the menu board initially and, and the lot line. I, I read the number twenty point zero zero as a distance. Apparently, it's, 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 it's not, the distance. Uh, is between the menu board and the lot line is, is way more than that. Yes, it's on the order of about fifty feet, so based on the white paper analysis that um they submitted. I, I believe it would be fine, provided, and, and this is a big provided. That the A B C is on all the time, which they, they committed to in, in their submission, so. As far as the A B C is, is on all the time. We, I wouldn't anticipate that the noise from the menu board will migrate to hit the residential property. Uh, the other thing that I'm actually a little bit concerned about is the noise from the cars. Driving into the um, like the drive lane. And if, if you look at the distance between the edge of the car and the fence, it's just ten feet. That's, that's very close, and, and if, if, if a, as a. Radio, car radio or so is, is, is loud enough, I'm sure noise is gonna be migrating through the fence. Unless there is, there is a commitment from, from the um operator to make sure that. Uh, the cars do not make the radio loud, and, and I would actually recommend. Or suggest them use an eight-foot-tall fence. Right now, while looking at the, the, the site plan, I can see that the, if you look at page two of the PDF, the site plan. That the plan says uh six, proposed six feet high vinyl fence. Around the property line, and, and when you look at the analysis and the final page of that PDF, it's, it's, it's kind of a different fence. And it's eight feet tall. I would suggest that they go with the eight feet tall. To avoid any further complaints from neighbors regarding noise from the cars going into the driveway. Uh, not, again, not from the menu board, but from the cars. You don't wanna, might be surprised the complaints after the, the facility.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Sheta, your uh last sentence, we couldn't hear, um. Could you repeat the last sentence?
Yeah, sure. I said I, I suggest that they go with an eight-feet-tall fence rather than the six. Uh, for vinyl one, eight-feet-tall fence with, with some sort of like acoustical um, uh functioning. To make sure that even if the cars has some radio loud. That the noise will be filtered through that fence and it's not gonna be migrating to the rear yard, the residential rear yards. Uh, that's for them, but if, if they wanna go with the proposed. I'm, I'm fine with it, provided that after, after the operation is, is, is going. There is no complaint arise from the neighbors and, and probably the board may wanted them to add a note. Uh, with that regard to the plans, if noise arise, they need to uh to get a fix done. That, the other, the next point I wanna touch on, that number of reservoir spaces on the plans, and I'm looking at the first plan. Actually sixteen, if you look at uh.
Um, I would suggest everybody look at the plan uh that was submitted on uh twenty twenty-three two nine. That is the latest plan and that, I also made the same mistake and that's why I'm saying.
Oh, I'm looking at August thirty.
Yeah, don't look at, don't look at six thirty twenty twenty-two. Look at the plans dated two nine twenty twenty-three. And that shows fourteen reservoir spaces.
Oh, I see, I see. Hold on, let me, let me open the other one.
And also, uh, with that is the associate statement of facts, also from the same date, two nine twenty twenty-three. And I think, um, that's, those, those should be reviewed together.
Okay, give me, give me one second.
And that's why I was a little confused, because as part of the um. Two nine twenty twenty-three submission, the applicant submitted the Allegheny um. Sound testing S T C report uh for a fence type, which is totally different from what's on the two nine twenty twenty-three revised plans. Uh, which is the one, um, the one that I read out, uh Buff Tech Certain Feed. Um. So. Is it the same? Because that's also Allegheny High Sound Attenuating, is, is it the same? But in this one, it's an eight-foot high and not a six-foot high, so that's where my question was.
Yeah, I'm looking for the fight.
And I would agree with you, Commissioner Sheta, that I, um, I think an eight-foot-high fence in this case would be a better solution that way. And it also would address uh some of the concerns that Commissioner um. Otley Brown has raised with regards to the trash enclosures. If you have an eight-foot high, it further provides offer of the noise. Um, but if you move it, it makes it even better. And then, um, having an eight-foot high of, provides a further buffering. Of the noise from vehicles that are idling or vehicles that are driving through the pass-by lane. And providing additional signs along that wall and, and the, and. Um, the wall, um, that would be fronting the accessory parking spaces that, um. The volume be turned down, uh, and radios be turned off, uh, something to that effect, to minimize the noise. Uh, propagating from these vehicles.
Yes, uh, yes, I'm in the new room, yes, I, I see fourteen spaces. Yes, that's, that's accurate, and I see the six-foot-high Buff Tech fence, yes. Which, uh, yes, I, I believe, I agree that eight feet is, is much better than uh six feet. Regarding the Lumen, and, and, and this is why initially, uh. I was like, I used to hate that computer programming. And, and I'm, I'm gonna repeat this again, in, in computer modeling world, there is a principle, fundamental calls. Uh, giggle, which means garbage in, garbage out. If you have a computer model and you put something bad in, as in input. You get, you, you will get something bad out as an output. And, and, and that the problem with the computer modeling for lighting, and, and let me, let me just. Show what I'm talking about here. Yeah, if, if you look at P one, this P one here, I'm not sure if you can see my screen. But right here, you have three, three, and then right behind the fence, it's zero. The, the, the reason why here is because that model, the computer software that does this. Takes the shield as its continuum from ground all the way to planet Pluto. So there is no light whatsoever will, will travel horizontally. That's why it's given zero right behind. This is not the case unless there is a shield that's placed from the top of the pool all the way to the fence. Which is, which is definitely is not gonna be the case. I, I would suggest them to account for partial shielding in the input for that software if it's possible. If, if it's not, then even, even if I'm the one who's modeling this, I would go with the board. Discretion value, which I believe is two lumens, if I'm not mistaken. Put two lumens in the back, consider two lumens in the back, and look at the height of the fence. If, if the height of the fence is enough, you're good. Look at the shielding, if the shielding is enough, you're good. But putting, putting three, 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 or three point two and three. And three to the right and left of that, of that light pool, and then all of the sudden, right behind that is zero. I don't think this is, this is the way to um, to, to go. You might face, and, and I'm saying this, not because of. The status now, this is still proposed construction, but you don't wanna after you install the lighting and you operate, you, you get complaints from the neighbors. And then if we ask you to go and measure, you, you, you're gonna see that that Lumen right behind the fences, let's say. Let's say five four four, then you need to install shieldings after fact, which costs time and money. I, I wanted them like avoid that kind of situation. So please take a look at the Lumen one more time and, and, and consider again, consider the board discretion of two lumens. Across, and I believe that should be enough to uh, to get the job done.
Uh, I just wanna be clear, when we suggested the two Lumen, it was, it would be two Lumen at the property line, not beyond the property line.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, 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 at the property line is, is kind of that singularity in the black hole, it, it's right just to the left or right on the front and right behind. And my understanding, if it's, even if it's right behind, is two, it's not gonna be significant impact to uh, to that. There is, there is one sign I'm thinking of asking them to install, and I, I, I wanna see if, if the board agree with me. Uh, and it is a sign at the exit of the, of the facility on, on Basley. Uh, they cannot, the car cannot make a left turn, because left turn is, is kind of, it's gonna be crossing double. Uh, yellow solid on the street. If, if they put a no left turn there, I believe that would be very helpful in mitigating the traffic conflict. Uh, on Basley for the cars that exiting uh from that side. I'm, I'm not sure if the board agree with me, but I, I, I do believe it will, it will significantly help mitigating conflict on Basley. And, and that's all what I have for now. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, Carlos Sandman up? I don't know.
Yes, uh.
Yes, members, I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, I, I just wanted to make a suggestion in, in some of the site designs that. Um, that at minimal, um, you know, the design must comply with, with the provisions within thirty-seven ninety. Um, also with regard to the placement of the refuge, uh thirty-seven ninety-four. At least as a minimal standard, because remember the purview before the board is the drive-through. Um, th- those other things must comply, or at least within the board's discretion. Uh, be more than what is the minimal requirements.
Um, that's, yes, I think. We can always enforce, um, ma- um, direct that and, and make the applicant aware of that. Uh, I just wanna look at section thirty-four ninety, just in terms of parking lot, uh.
Thirty-seven ninety.
Storage, yeah, sorry, thirty-seven, yeah, yeah, I meant thirty-seven ninety-four, I'm looking at it.
Seventy-four is at least the minimal requirement.
It says, and just for everybody, it says, all site plans must show an area designated for refuse storage. Any container used for refuse storage must be enclosed and screened either within a building or an accessory structure. If refuse storage is located in a container or accessory structure, it must be located at least fifty feet from any street line. And screened on all sides by a six-foot-high masonry wall with one side consisting of an opaque lockable gate.
Again, so, yeah, I, I was only suggesting that, of course, the board has discretion as to where it's placed, as long as it meets the minimal requirements. And that would be true for any of the provisions under thirty-seven ninety. Uh, that guide, you know, design or buffering or plantings uh for parking lots contiguous to residential. Or whatever applicable provision.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Yun?
Uh, thank you. I, I generally agree with all of the comments. I. Um, question the need to raise the fence to eight feet only because, because it is opaque. That is that much less light that you're giving to those residential neighbors, but it's a balance of discussing whether the light versus the sound. Um, at six feet is insufficient to block all of the noise. The, I share the same concern that the testing supplied is for a different model of fence. So it doesn't seem relevant unless they can somehow prove otherwise, um, but. Otherwise, I think uh all of these improvements could be um, an improvement for those residential neighbors. There's a lot of the existing. Use with the gas station has a lot of vacuum and air towers right along that back fence, so I think, um. This will be an improvement, hopefully, uh, the resident, residents think so as well. I have no further comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, any comments on um review for a D O T? Um. Uh, sorry, this is a question for Commissioner Bank, I'm sorry, um, Ms. Banky.
Um, they did issue comments on the twenty-first, um. It's been several rounds, but the latest was on February twenty-first.
Yeah, I, I looked at the earlier one, it didn't, um, does it require a lot more analysis? And I think they were looking at an older drawing also.
I believe they were looking at the most recent drawing, uh, well, there was four, fourteen spaces, I believe. Fourteen reservoir space, is that the most recent?
Yeah, because I think the, the letter, um, I, I'm, oh, I didn't look at the two twenty-one twenty-three letter, I was looking at the earlier letters. I just, I just saw the two twenty-one letter.
Yes, um, the comments seem to refer uh to taking a look at the existing gas station. For analysis, um. And they want them to install do-not-enter signs facing out from the site. At both the driveway exit from the drive-through and the driveway exit onto Basley Boulevard. And those.
Right, they put a do-not-enter at Basley, but I don't think D O T is asking for no left turn onto Basley.
Yeah, I didn't see that in any of the, I have to take a look again, but.
Okay, okay. Okay.
I, I, I didn't see that either, that's, that was like one of my thoughts, because frequently when, when you're exiting a facility like that. People used to like cut the line and just go across the double solid. I, I know might be like okay in the city, but I, the reason I raise that is I believe that it's, it's gonna mitigate the conflict. If D O B is, D O T is okay with it, I, I'm not pushing them to put it, it's just a suggestion.
Okay, I, I, I would like the applicant to clarify it and based on that, we can make, um, uh, we can make a call. Whether it. Uh, any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay.
Good, um, I just wanna say something, uh, to the members of the public, uh, this is a review session. You will get your opportunity in a few minutes to respond to any comments, um, when the public, when the public hearing is announced. Um, we do not take comments now at review session, so please put. Um, we do not take comments now at review session, so please put your hands down. Thank you. You'll get an opportunity when we call the cases. Um, in the hearing. So this concludes the public review session. Um, do you want to continue on to the hearing?
Um, commissioners, do you, uh, should we continue with the public hearing? Yes.
Okay. Steve, you want to put the screen up? Thank you, Steve. Okay, good. Still morning. Good. Good morning. This is the part boarder stand. It's an appeals public hearing for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. We'll begin with the appeals calendar, second call item twenty twenty two to A seven twenty eight Court Street, Brooklyn.
I think, uh, this would be Melanie Myers.
Yes. Uh, I don't see Melanie. I think it will be. Also Lee Whitman. Lee, Lee, do you want to join as panelists to also? Ms. Whitman, sorry.
Oh, I actually am here.
Oh, you're there, Melanie. Okay, thank you. I didn't see. I apologize.
No, that's no problem.
Um, Ms. Hinkson. And who has their hand up? Chris Ernst, if you're a member of the team for Court Street, please raise your hand. To be allowed in.
Who else from your team, Ms. Myers, will be joining in for the public hearing?
Yeah, I think I'm the only one that's planning on speaking, um. Chris Ernst, though, I'm just, uh, looking, uh, Emma Manson, though I'm not sure I see her, Lee Whitman. Um, are other people who are part of it.
Um, Reverend. Reverend Thords and Colette DeLoro, are you part of the team or are you members of the public?
Part of the team.
That's part of the team? Okay, I apologize.
I'm a member, I'm a member of the public.
Oh, you're a member of the public?
Yes.
Oh, okay, um, right now you're, um, we're not gonna take your testimony, so. Um, you're for this case, Court Street?
No, I'm for the, um, one twenty two oh five Merrick Boulevard, uh, the Starbucks.
So I'm sorry, that's not the case we just called, so, um, we'll have to take you out of the room. I'm sorry.
Uh, Reverend, we will be hearing, uh, the Merrick Boulevard. We will be hearing it in the order. In the order that we, uh, discuss all the cases for today and Merrick Boulevard is the last case, uh, for the day.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
No, Alexi.
This man, uh, we, so we, uh, we don't, uh, you have to wait for, uh, the next, yours is the next case.
Oh, sorry, no worries. Okay, I'll wait.
Okay. Yeah, we, we just, we were second, I'm sorry, to the public. For confusion, we are second calling this case that we had heard yes, that we had on yesterday, so.
And can you read out the case number again, uh, Mr.?
Case that I'm working, is currently on discussing is twenty twenty two two A seven twenty eight Court Street, Brooklyn. That is the only case we are discussing currently right now. And this is with the members of the team and the applicant.
Great. Uh, so shall I start?
Yes.
Okay, um, hi, thank you very much for having us. Uh, my name is Melanie Myers, uh. We, uh, represent with Fred Frank, representing the applicant. And, um, as you all know, we were here, uh, before the. Board, uh, several months ago. Uh, since that time, we have, um. Made modifications that were responsive to some of the comments that we heard at the, uh, initial hearing as well as. Uh, responding to comments that we received from the various agencies and. We are happy to have received conditional designation, uh, conditional approvals. Um, from, or, uh, non objections from all of the agencies that were involved. Uh, I just wanted to confirm that we did receive the letter that you all received from the fire department. This morning, we are comfortable with the conditions and are, um, pleased to be able to incorporate those into the plan and would be happy to answer any questions.
Um, thank you. Um, thank, uh, I want to hear from Chief Daly.
Uh, good morning, um, Madam Chair, um, Ms. Myers and, uh, Ms. Whitman, thank you for your assistance. And, uh, coordinate everything, um, you know, as per our letter. Uh, the fire department would, uh, expect to request. That, uh, condition be, uh, noted in resolution, if granted. Uh, that you had stated earlier, uh, Madam Chair, uh, that, you know. Shall be unlawful to install, uh, above ground flammable combustible liquid storage tanks as per section forty two twenty seven of zoning. Uh, store flammable liquids in basement cellars and other areas below grade. Uh, use of transport, uh, containers as a stationary, uh, storage tanks. And to, um, it shall be unlawful. To permit the dispensing, mixing of any flammable and combustible liquids on the premises. And last, uh, shall be unlawful to permit, uh, fleet fueling operation at these premises. If in the future, the, the owners, um, want to, uh, provide, uh, storage of, uh. Fueling at this, uh, operation at this, at these premises. No, an application shall be filed with the Bureau of Tech Management, uh, in the Bureau of Fire Prevention, uh, for review and approval and permits. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Daly, for, um, staying on top of this application, um, and working with our, um. Um, BSA team, um, and I want to thank the applicants also, uh, diligently working with our team. Um, and as, uh, fire department, uh, chief, um, Daly mentioned, um, that the, uh, conditions. That are in the letter should also be included in the plan. And any other corrections, uh, or, uh, notes that need to be added. To the plans with regards to any other comments or conditions that's been granted from any of the agencies, please include those. Um, in the, um, in the letter, uh, in the plan, sorry.
Yes, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, any questions or comments for, uh, Ms. Myers and her team? Um, or for Chief Daly? Okay, commissioners are saying no, let's go to the public.
Put the screen up, Steve. Okay, the case we are currently discussing is twenty twenty two two A seven twenty eight Court Street, Brooklyn. Should you wish to discuss, please dial six four six five five eight eight six five six. Or our toll free number eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine, if you're outside the city limits. You will enter webinar ID number eight one four five nine zero one. Two eight five two and the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're in, it's press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute to speak if you are calling in by phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to discuss this case. Please raise your Zoom hand, which is a small hand at the bottom of the screen. Once you're permitted in, you will have three minutes to discuss. We are only discussing at this moment, seven twenty eight Court Street.
Um. Ms. Myers, how long will it take for you to make these corrections, for your team to make these corrections to the plans?
Um, a couple of days, we should be able to get them back to you, if not by the end of the week, first thing, the following week.
Okay, all right. I will say one week. Um, Ms. Banky, are there any notes, uh, that I may have overlooked that, um, that needs to be included in the plans? Okay, um, I, I, what I would suggest is that Ms. Banky can go through all the comments and make sure that they are all included in the plans and will coordinate with your team, Ms. Myers. Okay.
Sounds right.
All right, we're just waiting for the clock to run out and we will, um, I. I would recommend that we close the hearing today and, uh, we'll try to schedule this. Um, for probably the later of the March, um, hearing or the early April hearing for vote. I don't think March. The thirteenth is possible, um, most likely March twenty seventh or April tenth. We will then. Vote, um, on the application.
Okay. Do you want to do a motion to close now?
Um, did the clock run out?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, it did. Okay. All right, so I make a motion to close.
Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Chata.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye. Okay, all right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is item number nineteen twenty eighteen one eighty eight A and one eighty eight eighty nine A. One ninety four twenty eight, one ninety four thirty two, Dunton Avenue, Queens. Thank you, Ms. Landisman, for waiting. I apologize. Okay, you can proceed.
Uh, is anyone else from your team or is it's just you?
I believe Ning Lu, the architect. Is, uh, waiting room.
Yeah, he's in the waiting room.
I'll bring her in as well. She'll be joining me. Um.
Okay. Um, so you heard our comments, uh, if you can give us an update, status update on, uh. Portion of the site, that's.
Yes, so we had a meeting with Chief John Daly, uh, about two, three weeks ago, where we figured out a strategy on how we were going to proceed with the violations. The strategy is to seal up the building and to, um. To repair the sand pipe, um. So at this moment, the property is, uh, the sealing process has begun. The cinder blocks has been, have been, uh, put in. We've sent over photos. Uh, but we do need to file a permit for this, uh, like an amendment to the initial permit. Um, the whole process will probably take us two months to, uh, repair the stand pipes and get the D O B approval. For that, um. And with regards to the G C L thirty six with, um, with a dismissal, we're hoping to get that dismissed. And once that's done. Um, Ning Lu will file a B P P for the Dunton Avenue properties for the G C L thirty five waiver, and then we would be able to. Address all of the D E P's concerns, so we can finally get this case.
D O T concerns.
D O T concerns, sorry, thank you. D O T concerns, um, addressed.
I have a question. You said you need to file a permit, uh, for what?
Uh, to get the stand, sand pipe.
Okay. And fire, okay.
Right, I think I emailed Tony, uh, yesterday evening with a timeline as well.
Uh. I, I, I wanted, uh, for you to stage for the record, so that's why.
Got it. And we also received a, uh, conditional letter, um, of no objection from Chief John Daly.
Oh. You did?
Believe, uh, a conditional letter, yes.
Uh, we have not received anything, so. I, I'm, I want Chief Daly to speak to that.
Um, sure, absolutely.
Yes, Chief Daly.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, and the fire department, uh, no longer has any objection, uh, to this application. And we will be filing a conditional letter of no objection, uh, for this application that is currently, uh, being heard. So we will, uh, do like to put that on record that a letter will be forthcoming. Thank you.
Okay, and when you said the application is both G C L thirty five and thirty six?
Currently, yes, but we are, we did send over a letter to, um, withdraw the G C L thirty six waiver. Uh, so all we're looking to do is the G C L thirty five waiver for the Dunton Avenue properties. And Ning, who is the architect on those sites as of, as of recently, will file a B P P, um, to, as per the D E P comments.
Right. I, I just wanted Chief Daly to confirm that the, the no objection applies for both G C L thirty five and thirty six. Even though G C L thirty six is going to be withdrawn, but you currently, as it stands.
But yes, Madam Chair, I will, uh, for both G C L thirty five and thirty six, yes.
Okay. Great, good. Um, any other question, uh, any other comments, uh, Ms. Landisman?
Uh, no, I'm actually going to defer to Ning as far as when we can have our next hearing because she needs to file B P P. Uh, with, with the D O B, um, and so I'm gonna just defer to Ning as far as how much time she needs to do those, um.
Okay, all right. Ms. Lu.
Um, hi, this is Ning Lu, architect. Uh, thank you for, um, hearing us. Um, for the application, uh, we basically, based on the fire department's conditional letter, thank you, uh, Chief John. Um, we have to, um, do three things. One is to amend the, um, existing ceiling building drawings to, to meet all the, um. A requirement from the fire department. Second is to, uh, file a stamp application and get approved. And then get, uh, permitted so that we could do the stamp pipe repair. Um, the third is a B P P builder's pavement plan, um, to be filed, but it has to go through a standard review by D O T. So, um, so that will take, um, at least, uh, a few weeks if it's not a month. So, so we are looking at, um, possibly needing two months, uh, to get the B P P approval, depending on the availability. Of the, uh, D O T representative at the D O B.
Yeah, yeah, I think it will take at least a month for D O T to, uh, review the B P P, not two weeks. I think it may be more than that. Generally, this is kind of what I, we have noticed. So you may want to factor in three months, probably, two to three months, I would say. Uh, Chief. Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Pierce. Uh, Chief, you had your hands up, yep.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, uh, this is up from Ms. Ms. Lu. I know when you file your applications, uh, to convert these to stamp pipe from wet to dry. They will be asking for a letter from the fire department. Once you do get that objection, please, uh, contact me right away and I can expedite that letter. Uh, now I have a chief's on board and we will get that letter to you. Thank you.
I see. So one other thing is, um, the engineer, professional engineer does mention that because it's just a repair for the stamp pipe. Um, he, uh, would go through a professional certification with stamp pipe and converting from the, uh, wet to dry. Uh, for, for that stamp pipe you have requested, because it's not a full sprinkler system. If we go through a standard review. Um, that would require the whole building to be, uh, renovated with full sprinklers system. That's not what we wanted and that's not requested by fire department. And, and, uh, that's why he's going to go through a professional certification, uh, for this, uh, specific scope. And he will give you a call to, um, identify exact what you want, so that whatever our drawings on the plans will, um, meet all your requests.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Chief Daly, and thank you, Ms. Lu. Um, okay, uh, any questions from the commissioners for the applicant, from, uh, Chief Daly? All right, let's go to the public then.
Okay, the case that we're currently discussing is twenty eighteen. One eighty eight A. Eighteen one eighty nine A, one ninety four twenty eight, one ninety four thirty two, Dunton Avenue, Queens. Should you wish to discuss? Please dial six four six. Sorry, five five eight eight six five six or one eight eight four seven five four four nine nine, which is a U S toll free number if you're outside the city limits. You will enter the webinar ID number eight one four five nine zero one. Two eight five two and the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute if you are calling in on the phone. If you're already in the Zoom room and wish to speak on this matter, please raise your Zoom hand, which is a small hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once anyone is permitted in, they will have three minutes to discuss. And this is only for Dunton Avenue.
Okay. Um, so I am going to make a motion to withdraw G C L thirty six.
Which was Palermo Street? Hmm? Those are the properties under Palermo Street.
That's right, and, um. Make a motion to close the G C L thirty. Well, we don't have the B P P, we don't have the D O T signups and, and D E P, so I cannot close on that. So, no, only. Only withdraw G C L thirty six.
Chair, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, yes.
Yes, um, I, I know that the applicant submitted a letter to withdraw, but if we could possibly lay over the withdrawal to the next decision date. So the next hearing date, which is March thirteenth, we can make a motion to withdraw on that calendar.
Okay.
So in two weeks, effectively, just, uh.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, I did not realize it has been scheduled for March thirteenth.
No, I don't believe it has, but just to. Uh, just to keep it. Within the. The way that we normally make withdrawals, the.
just to keep it within the the way that we normally make withdrawals, the March thirteenth date when we do other decision items.
Okay, oh, okay, I see, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, all right, we won't take, we won't take any actions now, okay.
And Tony, would you have to reach out to D E P to issue new comments that are slightly varied from the original G C L thirty-five and G C L thirty-six comments?
They commented on the D E P letter was on Dunton, if I'm then corrected, but take a look.
Right.
Yeah, take a look, but D O T, I'm sorry, D O T will not issue any comments, they're waiting for revised site plan. So you need to provide that plan so that they can issue more comments, any other comments.
Okay, so so right now Ning will issue, will provide site plan and then a B P P for just Dunton Avenue site instead of Palermo as well.
Right, because Palermo will be gone.
Right.
Okay.
And D O T needs a site plan?
Yeah, they said they needed revised site plan because the last one included Palermo.
Okay.
And although I did indicate that those properties will be withdrawn, that only the two properties on Dunton were in front of us, they still needed. They had issued some comments, but they still need revision to the plan.
Okay.
Can you send over the new comment, the comments to me one more time for D E P, D O T, just so I have them all on, you know.
Sure, we'll send you the D E P letter.
Thank you.
And the D O T.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so time has run out for a broad, uh, public.
Okay, so I guess we are going to hear this case again on thirteenth.
Yes, to withdraw the.
Just to take the, to vote. Okay, got it. And then as far as providing all the others, we agreed on two months or three months' time.
Two months' time, yeah, I would say two months for you to get everything, so we'll give it two and a half months. I I think Ms. Matias will be able to give you, give me better guidance in terms of how how long it will take, so we don't want to waste any cycles. So we'll put it either two months or three months, just to make sure if D O T has any follow-up, build all of those timelines in place.
And we'll keep you updated on any updates we have.
Yes, please keep Ms. Matias updated on on progress and so that we can coordinate also with Fire Department if needed.
Thank you, Chief John Daly. It was a pleasure working with you on this.
Yes, thank you, Chief Daly. This is appreciated.
Thank you for responsiveness, everyone.
Have a great day.
Great, okay, move to the next case, Madam Chair?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Item number twenty, twenty twenty-one, forty-eight A and twenty twenty-one, forty-nine A, this is forty-two and seventy-two Schmiege Avenue, Staten Island.
This would be Mr. Dale.
Hold on, somebody has their hand up, who is this?
I am going to cover for Mr. Dale today.
Oh, that's right, Todd is away this week, I'm sorry. Mr. Dale is away, I'm sorry, he's unavailable.
But I can answer all your questions.
Thank you, Ms.
Do I have to square?
You're not being sworn in, it's an A case, go ahead.
Okay, cool. Elise Foladere from Eric, well, for Roth group, Roth group inspector on behalf of the applicant. The first question was regarding the seeker filing. We asked for three weeks in order to submit. And then the next question is they did not go back to the community board, but the buildings are as of right, and they will certainly be happy to work with the community in the event the buildings are built and there is a traffic issue. But they do not anticipate any such issues being created by the proposed development.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Any questions from the commissioners for Ms. Foladere? Okay, um, let's go to the public then.
Okay, the case we are currently discussing is twenty twenty-one, forty-eight A and forty-nine A, forty-two and seventy-two Schmiege Avenue in Staten Island. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six, five five eight, eight six five six, or the toll-free number eight eight eight, four seven five, four four nine nine. Once you are in, enter webinar ID number eight, one four, five, nine, zero, one, two, eight, five, two, press pound. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you are calling on the phone and able to speak, in order to speak, sorry. And if you are in the Zoom room already and wish to discuss this matter, which is Schmiege Avenue only, please raise your Zoom hand, which is a small hand on the screen, your bottom of your computer screen. Once you are permitted in, you will have three minutes to discuss.
Okay. Almost done. So I I think once you file the SECR, we will then schedule it for hearing after that.
Okay, I will let Mr. Dale know.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Foladere.
Sorry. Okay. Next item, new cases, item number twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, thirteen, A ninety-seven Industrial Loop, Staten Island. Ms. Foladere, you don't have to be sworn in.
Okay, Elise Foladere, on behalf of Roth group, Roth group inspector. We listened to your comments. We can add a five-foot dimension for the sidewalk to the plans to be more clear as well as a B P P is not required for this type of application, but references made to the Declaration of Maintenance and Roadway Improvement Plan submitted with the original application. So while there's not, and even though it is a private street, the standards will be the same, put in the same as a public street. So I think that, I hope that answers that question.
Um, trying to recall, did we ever ask for a B P P plan for any of the industrial loop, Ms. Matias?
No, because we have that, that Declaration of Maintenance that all the, that all the industrial people follow.
Okay. All right.
Oh, and then I forgot that a secret checklist, sorry, was submitted.
Okay.
I think you have to pay the fee on, is that the one they have to pay the fee on also?
I will let them know if they haven't, I'm not sure.
I don't know, Tracy.
We can confirm with the records unit.
Yeah, well, we won't proceed until all the fees are paid anyway.
Yeah. I just to confirm, did not ask for B P P on the other industrial loop cases.
Okay, thank you.
No, I don't think so, because they have that Declaration of Maintenance that all the lots in that area have.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Foladere commissioners? Okay, Chief Daly, do you have anything to add?
No, Madam Chair, Fire Department has no objection to this application.
Did we receive a no objection letter from Fire Department?
I owe you a letter.
You do. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Let's go to the public.
Sure. The case we are currently discussing is twenty twenty-two, thirteen, A ninety-seven Industrial Loop, Staten Island. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six, five five eight, eight six five six, or a toll-free number eight eight eight, four seven five, four four nine nine, if you're outside the city limits. You will enter webinar ID number eight, one four, five, nine, zero, one, two, eight, five, two, and the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to be able to speak if you are calling in on the phone. And if you are in the Zoom room already and wish to discuss this matter, which is ninety-seven Industrial Loop only, please raise your Zoom hand. Once you are permitted in, you will have three minutes to discuss.
Okay, how long will it take for you to make these corrections?
They seem pretty minor, so like you said, once you have the fee, you could probably put it on pretty fast.
Okay. All righty. So one week, I would say, for you. Almost done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to, do we need any other sign up from any other agencies on this, Ms. Matias?
It's a thirty-six.
No, thirty-six, okay, so I'm going to make a motion to close, but we won't vote on it until the SECR has been submitted and paid, fees paid.
So a motion to close, Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair, oh, sorry. Vice Chair Chabetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Atlee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashata?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, continue on?
Yes, are we allocated commissioners? All right, continue on.
B Z calendar, item number twenty-two, twenty eighteen, one seventy-three, B Z, one twenty-eight Beach Nine Street, Queens.
This would be who do we have?
Jay Goldstein.
And yeah, we just need Jay Goldstein, we don't need anyone else, right?
Yeah, Mr. Goldstein.
Hi, everyone, how are you? Morning.
Good money.
That's, that's, you're just, you're the only person, Mr. Goldstein, correct?
Yep.
Okay, raise your right hand, you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions.
I do.
Okay.
Good morning, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. I believe the only outstanding issue as mentioned by Ms. Benke is the the W R P, which we received about a week and a half ago, and we hope to respond by the end of the week.
Okay, and D E C?
We'll reach out to them one more time, but they haven't, aside from the initial comments, which the applicant addressed, they haven't stated any, any objection.
Okay. All righty, okay, any questions or comments for the, from the commissioners? Okay, let's go to the public.
Okay, the case we're currently discussing is twenty eighteen, one seventy-three, B Z, one twenty-eight Beach Nine Street, Queens. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six, sorry, hold on, six four six, sorry, I have to start the clock. Six four six, five five eight, eight six five six, or a toll-free number if you're outside the city limits, eight eight eight, four seven five, four four nine nine. You will enter webinar ID number eight, one four, five, nine, zero, one, two, eight, five, two, and the pound sign. Once you're in, press star, I'm sorry, the next prompt, you will press the pound sign. Once you're permitted in, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to speak if you are calling in on the phone. And if you are in the Zoom room already and wish to discuss one twenty-eight Beach Nine Street, please raise your Zoom hand. You will be permitted three minutes once you are recognized. See anybody so far?
And so I'm going to recommend closing the application since the findings related to the zoning resolution has been concluded at the earlier hearings. Now, since SECR doesn't speak to our findings, however, we'll keep the record open until SECR has been signed off and any determinations, any determination made by any of the agencies that requires amending the plans and the statement, the applicant shall do so and submit them prior to bringing the application for a vote.
Thank you very much.
Okay, make a motion to close.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chabetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Atlee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashata?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is item number twenty-three, twenty nineteen, three oh four, B Z, twenty nineteen, three oh five, A, one eighty, East one hundred and thirty-second Street, the Bronx. This is Ms. Iron, Amanda Anadi, please lower in.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Iron, are you the only one presenting?
Is Amber in the waiting room? It's just me and her today.
I don't see Amber. No, I don't see Amber.
Okay, that's all right, I'll just start.
Okay, wait, let me sway you in first, please. Raise your right hand, you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions.
Thank you. Good morning, Amanda Anadi, on behalf of the applicant, we listened to the executive session comments and, you know, there's not much here. Everything really depends on seeker sign-off, just a couple of small things regarding the plans, sheet twenty-one, verse seventeen. So the ground floor plan, sheet twenty-one, was actually revised in the August submission of last year per comment at April hearing. And then we updated sheet seventeen, went back to the F D N Y so they could put their stamp on their approved site plan so it matched. So now sheet seventeen and twenty-one are essentially the same, except seventeen is the F D N Y stamped plan.
Okay, so both, they both need to stay then?
Yes.
Okay.
And then regarding, I spoke to Amber about E designation on noise, there is a note on page twenty-eight. But if any further revision to that is necessary, per, I guess, D E P, let us know, we can, we can revise. And then, yes, she is addressing the the latest D E P air quality comments.
Which page did you say it's on? Twenty-eight.
Second top. There's like window schedule, and then there's a note about the E designation, E dash one four three. Proposed plan two nine twenty-three is the file name.
Yeah, I'm just, it's, it's, this is such a.
I know, it, me too, it makes my computer. I know it, me too. It makes my computer freak out a little bit. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'm getting that spool. Uh, floods on all mechanical, e-designation, E one forty three, testing protocol, window wall alternation out. Okay. Okay.
But I think that covers it. So we're waiting on DOT review of the draft restrictive declaration and then DOT sign off and then final DEP sign off after air quality. Um, I just wanted to ask if the board is in a position to close today. Um, it would give some assurance to the applicant to advance some of their funding conversations?
Yes. Yes, um, that that is the plan. Um, but before we do that, I want to see if commissioners had any questions for you. All right, uh, let's go to the public then.
Okay, the case we're currently discussing is twenty nineteen, three oh four BZ and twenty nineteen, three oh five A, one eighty East one hundred second Street, the Bronx, thirty second Street, the Bronx, I apologize. Should you wish to discuss dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or our toll free number, eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight, one, four, five, nine, zero, one, two, eight, five, two, and the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're in, you will press star nine to raise your hand. Star six two unmute if you are calling in on the phone in order to speak. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand on the bottom of the screen. Once you're permitted in, you will have three minutes to discuss. And this is only for one eighty East one hundred thirty second Street, the Bronx.
I had. A while ago, I had asked a question of how long it takes for the SCP and I'm assuming you would need a, was any work on SCP started now? Or?
Um, we have submitted a letter regarding that timeline with overall. Completion. Uh, I think it was about a year.
Right.
I can follow up with the the gentleman from ACRF that is spearheading that effort, but I I don't think much has has advanced since then.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to make a recommendation that we close. The. Hearing, um, partly because the findings related to the zoning resolution has been concluded. And SECR doesn't speak to our findings, however, we'll keep the record open until SECR has been signed off. Any determination made by any agencies requiring amendments, amendment to the plans and statements of findings, um, the applicant shall do so. And submitted prior to bringing the application for a vote. So with that, I make a motion to close.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Atlee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, item number twenty four, twenty twenty one eighty three BZ, eighty dash seventy four, one hundred eighty eight Street, Queens.
Hi, how are you? Good morning still. Jay Goldstein, I think I'm alone for today.
You're by yourself? Okay. Okay, uh, please raise your right hand, Mr. Goldstein. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do. Good morning, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. Um, we heard the board's comments. With regard to the plan comments and the plan cleanups, uh, we have no problem. We'll we'll make those adjustments. Um, with regard to the room utilization, so my understanding from the last hearing, because we didn't have a room utilization for the upper floors, which is was submitted and is what the board typically sees from us. My understanding was that the room utilization was really with regard to the gym, because we wanted to see how many people, how well, how often it would be used. And since we removed the gym, we did not update the room utilization. Um, we can add a note regarding the offices, which are really used by, you know, part time individuals for housekeeping for the synagogue or for general bookkeeping for youth programming. But it's not a full time position and it wouldn't be used daily. And it didn't, it wouldn't be used really for Sabbath either. So we kept the room utilization the way it was, believing that's what the board generally sees and generally wants to see. But if the board wants something different, I'm happy to provide it.
Right. Um, the reason I'm kind of insisting on that is because this is a question I had asked at the initial hearing also. Um, and that is the space. Uh, looks much bigger, the office space and and since the variances related to program and also FAR. Uh, I mean, it's a program that's driving the FAR. Uh, and the bulk, the the waivers of the side yards. I'm sorry, um, the. You know, uh, that is why I'm asking in for more clarification on the utilization of the space and why such a big office space is needed. Um, if it is not going to be a seven day operation and it would be a part time basis and therefore the utilization factor.
So I can, I can definitely address it and we can, um. The utilization wouldn't really be. Uh, duplicate, you can't, you can't really have the office within the gyms, within the the multipurpose room, but we can definitely look at it and explain it and tell you about the utilization and the need for the space. So we'll, we'll address it and we'll update it accordingly. Um, the next comment, which I think most of the commissioners had was with regard to the height and the FAR study. So I I apologize, it was may have been a miscommunication, but we submitted a. In in our June twenty twenty two submission, we had additional photos and a front yard study. Both of them had FARs for surrounding buildings as well as heights for surrounding buildings. We also had the front yard study for our blocks, which showed the height above the the street. So or the height above the sidewalk. And that's what we discussed at the last hearing, I believe that. The building itself would be lower than the other buildings, even if their total building height is not as tall. But they're up on a tall hill or they're at the top of the hill, so they just they'd appear larger. And with regards to the FARs, even though the buildings may have, residential buildings may have smaller FARs. They appear bigger. They have a very large appearance. If you drive down these blocks, the new homes in this area are very large looking, even if their FARs are not. Demonstrative of that fact, and this board is held, um, especially with regard to the home enlargements, that FAR is just kind of a number and not what's perceived. So if a home looks larger and fits within that look of the neighborhood, then it can match neighborhood, even if the FARs are a little larger. And that's what we've tried to justify through the prior submissions, which we had. Um, additionally, we brought in and we, within our response to the last hearing, we did give you a cover letter that had, you know, pointed you to specific pictures to discuss the. Previously submitted study of the area for the heights in the FARs.
So I was able to locate the frontage study. I wasn't able to locate the other.
Called additional photographs. It was submitted in June twenty one.
Okay. Okay, yes, I.
So that's why we didn't submit anything new, because we really, within our statement of facts and within our response to hearings, we amplified the, that which was previously submitted. So we didn't. Um, need, you know, we thought we didn't need to submit something new. We just pointed in the direction of how we were basing our arguments. Additionally, within our response letter, we did point to two board cases for community facilities within the immediate area. Both of which are within or larger than what we're requesting. We pointed to one that had an FAR approval of point nine two with a floor area of seventy three hundred seventy nine square feet, which is basically the same floor area that we're requesting. However, since our lot is larger, our FAR is reduced to point eight three that we're requesting. Um, there's another synagogue on one hundred eighty eighth street, a number of blocks away, that was approved for in excess of fifteen thousand square feet at one point oh four FAR. So we did add those, that information into our statement and into our response. To further bolster the fact that the community facility of the size of which we're asking is within the character of the neighborhood and that which the board has approved previously. So we, you know, if the board requests something additional, I'm happy to provide it, but we felt that we did respond to that comment and I apologize if it was missed. By me or by the board.
Uh, you know, because this was an earlier submission and, um, so I missed it, so I'm I'm looking at it right now, um.
I would just add further to to Commissioner Yun's point, the height of the building is as of right. And as mentioned at the prior hearing, we did reduce the building from the original iteration, which was to have a third story above what's what's proposed. And in response to other comments from the board for other hearings, we've removed that floor to keep it at a two story building, which we felt is within the context and the character of this neighborhood.
Um, I just want to correct one statement that you stated is when we review, when the board reviews enlargement of existing homes, we look at the, you know, the FAR. It's not very easy to measure, so we look at the what the billing appears. To to an extent, yes, but it's not always. Uh, it's not, is the driving thing, because there are cases that where we do look at. The total floor area and and FAR and other things also, so it's not always the same.
A hundred percent, and that's why we actually provided the community facility comparables as well, just to bolster that the community facilities within this neighborhood have been approved and are within that scale of which of which we're asking.
Um. I would also just let you know, if you didn't hear, um, I mean, um. We believe there is an opposition group also that is for that is formalizing. We haven't received an official letter, but I I think going forward, you should. Um, be prepared to share your, should the team formalize, you should be prepared to share information with the. Um, opposition council once elected, so I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Understood.
Any questions or comments for, uh, Mr. Goldstein? Okay, let's go to the public.
Sorry, thank you. Okay, the case we're currently discussing is twenty twenty one eighty three BZ, eighty dash seventy four hundred eighty eight Street, Queens. Should you wish to discuss dial six four six five five eight? Eight six five six or outside the city limits, our toll free number is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter webinar ID number eight, one, four, five, nine, oh, one, two, eight, five, two, and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're in, press star nine to raise your hand. Star six two unmute if you are calling on the phone in order to speak. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand. Once you're permitted in, you will have three. I'm sorry, you will have three minutes to discuss. So, um, two people we have in the room. Oh, Tracy, you have a hand up for some.
I just wanted to note that we received DOT comments, uh, this morning regarding this application.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chaney and Ms. Nasani. So can you let them in, Steve, please, and go back to the, um. Steve, do you want to go back to the screen? I've got eight seconds left, seven. I have people calling in.
Can we mute our screens?
I don't know what happened. Okay. Okay, um, so, Mr. Chaney, could you unmute, please?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you remember that you're representing someone or you?
Yes, my name is Frank Chaney. I'm a land judge's attorney with Rosenberg and Estes. I'm here to represent neighbors of eighty seventy four hundred eighty eight Street. Uh, Coalition of Owners and residents of the areas surrounding the proposed development. I've just recently been retained. Um, so today, I will just make a few initial comments, but would respectfully ask that the board. Continue this hearing so that we could make additional, more complete comments following the hearing. Um, we understand that under a long line of New York case law schools and houses of worship are given special deference, but none of that case law writes a blank check. Even the off sided case of Cornell v. Bagnardi relied upon by the applicant states that, quote, "There is simply no conclusive presumption that any religious or educational use automatically outweighs its ill effects." In Rochester v. Planning Board, the courts, the court stated, quote, "It is not to say that appropriate restrictions can never be imposed with respect to a church. Nor is it to say that under no circumstances may a church ever be excluded from designated areas." And in Westchester Reform Temple v. Brown, the court stated, quote, "We have not said that considerations of the surrounding area are unrelated to the public health, safety and welfare." So what are the appropriate considerations? Well, in Jewish Reconstruction Synagogue v. Roslyn Harbor. The court cited to the ordinances that upheld in the Westchester case, in which the court enumerated them as being, quote. Among other factors, the general character of the neighborhood, the size and location of buildings in the vicinity, the extent and types of uses to be made of the proposed buildings or buildings and traffic conditions and parking facilities in the area. Upon upon consideration of such factors, the Westchester Planning Commission set forth rules to, quote. Avoid or minimize insofar as practical impacts, including traffic, impairment of the use, enjoyment. Or value of properties in surrounding areas and incongruous or detrimental change in the prevailing character of the neighborhood. What the courts have said over and over is that while schools and houses of worship are given special deference on account of their presumed societal benefits. As stated by the dissent in Jewish Reconstruction Synagogue, quote, "That is not all of it. They also bring congestion. They generate traffic and create parking problems. They can cause a deterioration of property values in a residential zone." As stated by the court in Cornell, referring to its numerous present decisions. On the issue of, quote, "We did not intend to establish a rigid rule that educational or religious uses may never properly be found to conflict with these factors." Here, the applicant appears to take the position that they don't even have to try to address any of the considerations set forth and upheld in Westchester. Instead, the applicant points to the board's previous approvals of variances for two other synagogues, implying the board should similarly approve this application because it is, quote, "In line with those previous approvals." But here, I would bring to your attention the case of New York Institute of Technology v. Village of Old Westbury, where the court, in upholding the village's denial of a permit, stated, quote. "It should be quite evident that the village containing, that the village containing four college campuses is not pursuing a policy of exclusion or insularism." On the contrary, it has attempted to accommodate these uses to the essentially residential character of the community by placing reasonable restrictions on them. However, having approved expansion of the institute on previous applications does not require the board to grant the institute's present request to expand, irrespective of the effect it may have on the overall character of the community. So just because the board previously approved variances for two other synagogues in the area, it doesn't mean you have to approve this one. In fact, those variances, like the Village of Westbury's prior approvals of the New York Institute Technologies' expansion, similarly make it evident that the board is not pursuing a policy of exclusion. Houses of worship are allowed as a right in the zoning district. There are four more synagogues in a five block stretch of Union Turnpike, two blocks to the north. Two blocks further north, there are two more, and another block north, there are three more. Therefore, the issue here is not about use and whether the zoning or the board are excluding Jamaica Estates from the free exercise of religion. The question, therefore, is not whether a synagogue be allowed on this site, but whether a synagogue this large should be allowed. From that perspective, given the board's prior approvals, this application not unfairly raises the question, where is the tipping point? In the balance between the benefits and ill effects? If approved, this synagogue would be the seventh within approximately a half mile of this site and the twelfth in the neighborhood. Importantly, it would be the third to be located on a heretofore residential block, all three within a few blocks of one another and all three by variance from this board. All three within a few blocks of one another and all three by variance from this board. How many does it take before their cumulative ill effects outweigh their cumulative public benefit? As the courts have repeatedly stated, it's a question of balance. We respectfully suggest that the board look at this application not in isolation. But in the overall context of the surrounding area, especially in the context of the board. Already having granted variances for two other synagogues within two blocks of this site. Houses of worship are a good thing to be sure, but it's also true that there can be too much of a good, good thing.
Um, thank you.
Um, Mr. Chaney, you will be submitting a letter of representation, I believe, and some, a further submission, okay, thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Nasani, it was the next person up. You will have three minutes.
Okay, is that good? I unmuted, you can hear.
Yes, sir, please state your name and um, your.
Okay, I am Ronan Nasani. Uh, I am the son of David and Ziva Nasani, who live on Trune Road. I grew up on Trune Road from year nineteen seventy-six. Until I got married in the year two thousand, I now live about three blocks away, I'm still in the neighborhood. And uh, what I would just like to state simply is that um. Th- th- this block, um, having spent my, you know, the majority of my, my uh, my childhood. Until I got married, like I just said. It's a block that does not run through the neighborhood, it's a block that just extends one block up and it gets cut off by Haddon Road. Uh, it's a small block, it's a quiet block. As uh, Mr. Frank said, plenty of synagogues in the area. Uh, we, we don't oppose a synagogue, but, but parking, as an example, the block does not have the capacity. Trune Road does not have the capacity to accommodate parking for, uh, for a synagogue, for a congregation, that's. That's one point I would like to say, knowing the block inside out and running through. Uh, the bloodline of my body, I really know the block. It's not, it's not the right, that's number one, the parking on one eighty-eight Street. Uh, is very limited with bus stops, it would cause a lot of congestion to the rest of the public. Um, in general, we don't oppose a synagogue, but if it's a house of prayer, nothing beyond that. I think that people on the block are, are comfortable with that, but if we're talking about dining halls and dumpsters. And mass parking and rodents from, you know, if there's, if it's not gonna be clean, that is the, the block. It cannot, it cannot uh, carry such a project. Um, I don't think I have anything more to say.
Thank you. Next person is Mr. Fried, is it Fried or Freed, sorry?
Freed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Commissioner, my name is Howard Freed, I am a resident of the area, but I'm here in two capacities this morning. Uh, this afternoon, I guess, uh, I'm here as a area chair of, of Community Board, uh, eight, area, uh. Area seven, and um, what I wanted to discuss was twofold. Number one, we had a meeting in October where this, um, this application was presented to the full board. And uh, at the time, it was overwhelmingly uh. Declined, it was declined after presentation by Mr. Goldstein, there were questions presented to him by members of the, uh, of the board. Uh, as well as by myself, who ran the meeting, um, most of the questions didn't have answers, that was clearly not found to be satisfactory. Uh, to the Community Board. Um, I, I think Mr. Chaney has summed up uh, much of the concerns of the Community Board. Um, and of the local neighbors, so I'm here, as I said, I'm here in a capacity with authority from the CBA Chair. To speak as to what the Community Board uh, decided and presented to the BSA. I think you have the, the minutes certainly, uh, but I'm also gonna speak just briefly on some of the points that Mr. Chaney made. Uh, as a local resident, just two or three blocks away, uh, from the proposed uh, structure. There are in fact, uh, on Eightieth Road, um, between uh, Kent and Chevy. There are three synagogues there, one of which I presented to the BSA, uh, the Bukarian Synagogue, that's on, on Chevy Chase. That was approved by, by uh, support of the Community Board Eight, it was approved um, with variance. Um, and so that's on Chevy Chase, uh, between Kent and Chevy, I'm sorry, but Chevy Chase between uh, Eightieth Road and Union Turnpike. There's longstanding Hillcrest Stew Center, which is on Union Turnpike. Then there's Anche Shalom, which is on Ken Street, uh, on the, on the other corner, so you have three synagogues right there. You have a new uh, storefront synagogue opened up on just a few storefronts away from uh, Ken Street. Um, which uh, is, is again. On the same block, or one block away from uh, Hillcrest Stew Center, and then you have across Union Turnpike on one hundred eighty-first Street. You have another synagogue that just opened up and that's, I'm not clear on what the status of that synagogue was in terms of. Uh, application, but it is an ongoing structure, it, and, and, and a populated structure. Um, you have the current application, then behind me on Eightieth Drive. You have another synagogue that opened up, and that was a private home converted. Um, you, you of course have Young Israel, which has been a longstanding congregation since the uh. Um, or mid-eighties, uh, and they expanded back in two thousand, uh, with an ongoing population and of observers. Uh, and now you have another synagogue being built as of right on one eighty-eighth Street. Um, which I'm not aware of any application being made there, they're building as of right. Um, just across the street from Young Israel, down the block on one eighty-eighth Street, with that all said, there is saturation. Um, I attend synagogue, um, but I understand also the impact it can have on communities, the impact it can have on parking. Parking is a big, big concern, as Mr. Nasani said, it's residential streets. There, in addition to the synagogue that's being planned for this location, across the street in Union Turnpike. There's a commercial building, a medical center that was just constructed, literally off the corner, traffic builds up on one eighty-eighth Street. Um, around the corner, there's a, there's a daycare center that was converted from a Walgreens, that's gonna have traffic. So you put all these things together and you have a synagogue that's now being proposed for a population that we don't even, we've never seen anybody. At the Community Board meeting show up on the behalf of the congregation, we've seen Mr. Goldstein. Today before you, we don't have anybody, we don't have the applicant present, we've never even seen who this population is. Where they're praying currently, if they are praying somewhere in the neighborhood. And what their real need is, we're told it's thirty-one families, they say they're gonna expand to a hundred, where are they? So I say that all to the, this severe impact this could have on a community. That is saturated with houses of worship and we of course welcome houses of worship. But we're very concerned, we asked for a traffic study, we asked for a parking study. We asked for consideration as to what the impact of this synagogue is gonna have. On the local community, the residents of these uh, are one zoned homes. And on this very, very significant commercial street, one eighty-eighth Street, which is a crossroad. Um, with buses, public buses, there's speed cameras, there's two traffic lights, and it's going to back up all over the place. With that, I thank you for your time this morning, um, and I defer to Mr. Chaney for his points I have made, thank you.
Okay.
Um. Hi, uh, if I may say something, um, so under Cornell deference, the board generally. Uh, is to grant educational or religious institution application. Unless it can be shown to have adverse effect of the health, safety or welfare of the community. General concerns are being articulated about traffic and disruption to residential character. Of neighborhood are insufficient grounds for the denial of such applications. Um, I'd be welcome, Mr. Chaney and Mr. Freed to submit to the board and further in writing, but please keep in mind that that is the general rule that the board follows, thank you.
Mr. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Greenberger?
Yes, um, I just wanted to um, uh, state that the um. Uh, because we had um, almost no notice of this meeting. That uh, the neighbors would respectfully request that the hearing doesn't close. And that our council uh, be, have reasonable opportunity to present, um, you know, uh, the case. And that an additional hearing be held before the board votes. Um, I, I believe there was a written letter um, by um, Council Mojenera's office requesting the same. Um, so that, that's the first thing I would like to respectfully request. And um, that um, I, I think in summary, the neighbors don't really understand even why. This application needs to be before uh, the board, uh, the, the lot is already enormous, okay? It's uh, basically big enough to accommodate um, a reasonable house, house of worship, which nobody is. Uh, objecting to, with parking maybe even on the premises, okay? And uh, you know, this is the wrong location for what they, what they wanna do, and um. Uh, uh, I think that, uh, you know, again, reiterating what everybody has said. Uh, in, including uh, Mr. Nasani, um, the, um, this is a residential quiet block, it's a small block. Uh, with, within the, the neighborhood, and um. Uh, you know, I would hope that um, uh, you know, whatever is going on here will take into effect, uh, take into account the um. Uh, you know, reasonable uh, expectations of the neighbors. And that uh, you know, the quiet enjoyment and the enhancement of the neighborhood and not a detriment to the neighborhood. Uh, you know, will be um, in fact, uh, respected.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, anyone else?
Um, I Denise Dar, could you join us, please? To let her end, Steve, please.
Uh, Ms. Greenberg, can you loo-, can you please lower your hand?
Yes. Ms. Dar? Oh, she's, uh, she in? Okay. Ms. Dar, can you unmute and um?
I, oh, I see, uh, Ms. Denise Dar.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, thank you very much to all the commissioners, we're grateful for this opportunity to be heard. Uh, we heard a deputy counsel make a point about health and safety concerns. We are extremely concerned about the safety of our entire neighborhood. It should be called to your attention that Public School one seventy-eight, it goes from kindergarten to eighth grade. Is a few blocks away, the entire one eighty-eight Street. Houses large yellow school buses, multiple stops along one eighty-eighth. Children are running back and forth across the street into the school buses, we are extremely concerned for their health and safety. Um, it is already a fully saturated block and we cannot tolerate any more traffic. Or any more construction on our block or in our area. As it is for us to turn off of our block on Trune Road onto one eighty-eighth Street, we have no traffic light. We are often waiting um, countless minutes before we are able to turn onto the street. Um, it is a hazard for pedestrians and especially for children on their way to school. It is a heavily traversed road by children and community members. So we cannot simply, as it is now, we have a very dangerous situation and, and the, the lot is vacant. If it is built and is housing um, parishioners and there's activity seven days a week. We are that much more concerned about the level of the health and safety of children and, and pedestrians in the community. There is no parking in the new structure that was built, a medical building that Mr. Chaney referenced. They have not accommodated any parking there whatsoever, so, and there are a series of storefronts, as you all know, on Union Turnpike. There, um, the vendors and their, their customers are required to park up one eighty-eight Street. So the parking is just moving further and further up one hundred eighty-eight Street. Because there's no availability on Union Turnpike, which is causing a serious hazard and concerns. We see a lot of illegal uh, U-turns, et cetera, where there are school buses and children present. So please, we ask for continuance, so we can look further into this and we ask for the necessary studies. To be made in the community to ensure that Jamaica Estates continues to be. Uh, a safe neighborhood for the residents and for the children especially. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, at any other, sorry, go ahead.
Any other speakers for eighty dash seventy-four hundred eighty-eight Street Queens? I will though also say for the record, uh, the elected Mr. Gennaro did uh, reach out and it was by email. So not letter, I haven't seen a letter, just for the record.
Um, did the commissioners get the letter?
It wasn't a letter, it was an email.
Email, did we get the?
I believe Jella sent it to you yesterday. It was just asking that we keep the record open from one of his, Chief of Staff.
Right, yes, okay.
Okay, yes. I didn't see a letter, I, um, so if that's coming in, that's fine. Could anyone else? Okay. Madam Chair?
Okay, um, uh, thank you all for your participation. And uh, Mr. Chaney, um, please do submit uh, your letter of representation and. Um, and necessary documents to backup your argument. Mr. Goldstein?
Right, so, um, I heard the comments, I don't need more than, let's say, three weeks to respond, but I assume we'll let Mr. Chaney. Submit first and then we'll respond accordingly if necessary.
Okay, so, um. Who needs to respond, I think it would be Mr. Chaney who needs to respond and then uh. Because Mr. Goldstein, you also have some submission, uh, that you have to respond to the questions that we have raised today.
So I could have put mine in within uh, three weeks.
Right, and also I think it would be best if you also address some of the questions or comments.
Right, I think there's, as Trace, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but as Tracy mentioned, there was a DOT request, so we'll, we'll um, handle the DOT. Analysis and submit that as well.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes, I can submit uh, my testimony for today's hearing uh, right away. Um, but given that I was just recently retained, uh, basically had a day to prepare, I would like to have a little more time. To um. Review the case law and prior BSA cases on this, but certainly I can have that in, in, in the same period of time. As uh, Mr. Goldstein's response, three weeks, I guess.
Okay, so three weeks to submit, okay?
Thank you.
All right, and um.
I, I would just put, um. Three weeks to submit will put us actually in the, the first hearing in April. I don't know if that's the board's, um, the board's intention, but I, I would respect.
The holidays?
Hearing, holiday season, so I would request that we go to the morning after that if possible, just out of courtesy to all the Orthodox members, including myself. Who may be away for Passover.
So it would be then towards the end of April, is what?
Yeah, April sixth, the submission was the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth year on.
Okay.
Don't we need to get that submission from Mr. Chaney and then send it to Mr. Goldstein? And then he responds?
Yes.
To the first, well, it's not, it's not three, it's not three weeks.
It's gonna be more than that, yeah, that's, that's a good point, uh, one, two, three, so the submission will be made by the week of. Uh, March twentieth, and then there will be another uh, period. And when does the holiday season, uh, when the, when is the Passover period, the start of it, seventh or sixth?
Passover, yeah, starts on the night of the fifth. Um, and it goes till the sixth, the fourteenth.
Fifth to fourteenth, okay, so you do need to also provide a response, both of you need to provide a response and. So I don't even think April twenty-fourth would be possible, it might be, could be more like May.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there is, if there is like a, a, a feedback from Mr. Chaney after Mr. Goldstein's response. It's gonna take us to like, mid-May or maybe the first.
I think May eighth, May eighth is doable.
Yeah. May would have a submission of one, May eighteenth, uh, April eighteenth.
Uh, April twentieth, is that possible?
Um, so Mr. Chaney, how long do you need to get me your, your letter so that I can respond, for me to respond to?
I, I would, I would say two to three weeks, it's maximum.
We, we set a schedule now so that we're all held to a date so that we can confirm if the first week of May works.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's look at the schedule, um. It will take three weeks to submit for both of you, so that takes us to, to three. We are, uh, let's say March thirty-fourth to submit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And after that. How long will it, will it, uh, it, it will take two weeks for both parties?
It, I think it's going to get to Commissioner Shadda's point. I think it'll get confusing if we're submitting on the same schedule. So if Mr. Chaney wants to submit, and then I'll respond, and then, you know, then we can figure it out.
Okay, so then if it's 24th, Mr. Chaney submits, then you wouldn't, you're getting into the holiday, so you won't be able to submit.
Because I could probably submit by April, April 5th. No, when's the submission for the 8th hearing?
No, hold on, let me look.
April 26th?
April 20th.
April 20th for the, okay, I can do that for the May hearing.
So then when will you be submitting?
So Mr. Chaney will submit on 3/24, I'll submit on 4/20, and then hearing would be May 8th or 9th.
Then what about the sur reply for Mr. Chaney? That also needs to be factored in before the 20th submission.
Procedurally, I don't, I don't know how that works. Does Mr. Chaney have a sur reply in litigation? I have no idea.
That's a good question.
This goes to Commissioner Shadda, but I'm, I'm, Shabeta, but I'm happy to work with him.
I, I would say for the benefit of the case, we can allow like a, a close, a late submission for Mr. Chaney for like a week or so. I'm, I'm sure the sur reply is not going to be that complicated, so.
Yeah, I, I think that's fair. I think that's fair.
So then the 20, because the 8th is the hearing, May 8th.
We ask for a limitation on, on length of the sur reply?
Yes. Yes.
Would everyone be okay with nothing more than five pages, or?
Yes. And that would be submitted when, when did we say, the date?
Like the 27th.
27th.
I'm submitting April 20th. I'll give a week to submit. Is that what the board had in mind?
Yes, yeah. So 27th for the sur reply, and then we are scheduling for May 8th and 9th, okay?
Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for consideration. Okay, Madam Chair, do you want to keep going?
Commissioners, how do you feel? Do you want to keep going or take a short break?
No.
Okay, everybody wants to keep going, let's keep going then.
Okay, item number 25, 202214BZ, 1961 East 21st Street, Brooklyn. Thank you, Mr. Nissani, for appearing. Bounce out. Thank you. Saltman? Lyra, do you want to join? Ms. Saltman, do you want to join in, please?
All right, do we have Ms. Saltman?
No. Oh. Yeah, let her in, Steve. Please join us panelists, Ms. Saltman.
Hi, I was here. I don't know why you didn't see me.
Picture, please, if you can. There we go. Thank you. Nice to see you. Do you raise your right hand?
The opposition.
Do you affirm, raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
Of course.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Lyra Altman from Office of Lyra Altman. I did attend your executive session this morning, and I heard your comments. With respect to the floor area, I see I'm frozen, sorry. With respect to the floor area, this building actually does not have a floor area that exceeds 4.0, as shown on page P1 of the plans, and also said in our statement twice, you will see that the proposed floor area for the site is 1.03, but the house is a 1.0 with 3,990.73 square feet. The additional 120 square feet is due to the addition of a shed on the site.
And that's, is that existing shed?
No, it's not an existing shed, it's a new shed. If your board would like, we could remove that from the plans. We just thought it was best to include it. But the building is 3,3990.73 square feet.
And what is that FAR that results in?
1.0 on a 4,000 square foot lot.
Well, I just have to say, you know, when Zola does look at the zoning analysis, I'm sure they're looking at all the sheds and everything put together. So even factoring that in with the shed included, I, I do think the FAR is, is a little too high. It needs to be brought down to 1 of there. So you can figure out a way to bring it down.
We'll be glad to remove the shed from the site, not a problem. That'll bring us right down to 1.0.
Just want to look at the plan.
Please.
You're talking about the Mason, you should hold it in the back?
That is correct. If you look at the original plans that were submitted with this application, we did not have the shed, and it was at 3,990.73 square feet. We then added the shed, which brought us up that additional 120 square feet. If your board would like to bring it back down to 1.0, we'd be glad to remove the shed. And that would bring us back to the originally filed plans effectively.
Okay. Is that okay with the commissioners? Not seeing all the commissioners, yes, now I get to see. Okay, please then make that revision, eliminate the.
We'll be glad to. We can have that changed to you in a matter of days.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Altman, commissioners? And let's go to the public then.
Let's just change the timer. Okay, the case we are currently discussing is 202214BZ, 1961 East 21st Street, Brooklyn. Should you wish to discuss this application, please dial in 646-558-8656, or our toll-free number, which is 888-475-4499. You will enter webinar ID number 81459012852 and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're in, you will press star 9 to raise your hand, star 6 to unmute to be able to speak if you're calling on the phone. And if you were in the Zoom room already, I wish to discuss this case, which is 1961 East 21st Street. Please raise your Zoom hand. Once you are permitted in, you will have three minutes to discuss.
Is it, is it allowed to put a shit against the lot line like that? I'm just wondering.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
If you go to the zoning resolution section, which says permitted obstructions?
It's, it's considered as a permitted obstruction, and they are, okay?
Okay. So it'll take you one week. We will see how quickly we can schedule this for next round of hearing.
I would appreciate that.
Okay, so and you'll make the necessary revision to the zoning chart, statement of facts, all of those things, right?
That is correct. I'm just looking at the calendar right now. I apologize. Okay, good. I was just making sure there was no hearing on the 21st because I'm not available on that day. And there's not. There's no hearing that day.
On 21st of?
Of March. I was just looking at the calendar just in case, but no, there's not. Problem.
No, 20, March 27th is probably a likely, but we have a pretty busy schedule. So I, we will do our best, and we will get back to you.
I appreciate that.
Are you closing this or not continuing this?
No, 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 because we still need to review all the other documents.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, item number 20.
Thank you, Ms. Saltman.
Sorry, thank you, Ms. Saltman.
Thank you.
Item number 26, 202231BZ, 337E64th Street, Manhattan.
This is Mr. Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Johnson, please join us panelists. And Mr. Knowles, please join us panelists, please.
And I think previously, Sheetal Patel, Jeff Rubin, Aaron Schwartz, they were also participating. Do they need to?
Their hands are not up, but if they want to join.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson, who all from your team will be participating?
It's just Eric and myself today.
Okay.
Okay. Please raise your right hands. Oh.
There are people in base of questions, but it should be, we believe we're all done.
Okay, so whoever is participating, join the team or whatever. Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm, Mr. Knowles, thank you, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
We state your name for the record and proceed.
Eric Knowles, Fox Rothschild. For the applicant. We attended review session. We're very happy that we now have final sign-off on, I think, all portions of the environmental review. So we'll go ahead and we'll submit a final EAS, which I think we can do the next few days. And in terms of the additional plan notes, we'll wait for Ms. Banky to provide those to us. And if there are any that need to be incorporated, we'll do so, and it'll take a day or two to submit. But we thank the, the board for expediting this towards the end, and the school is very pleased to get, to get moving forward.
Yeah, and thank you to your team also for working with Ms. Banky and Ms. Panga to get all the comments in an expeditious manner. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay, let's go to the public.
So the case we are currently discussing is 202231BZ, 337E64th Street, Manhattan. If you wish to discuss, please dial 646-558-8656, or outside the city limits, our toll-free number is 888-475-4499. You will enter the webinar ID number 81459012852 and the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star 9 to raise your hand, star 6 to unmute to allow you to speak if you are calling on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are permitted in, you will have three minutes to discuss.
Okay. How long will it take for you to, I, I know you need to get the notes from Ms. Banky to add them to the plans, but it, are the plans, are the notes very extensive, Ms. Banky?
As I can tell, it'll be three, four notes.
Okay, all right.
We can turn those around very quickly. And, you know, so if we can have a decision sooner rather than later, we appreciate it.
Okay. And I'm, I'm just looking at our schedule.
I believe we were tentatively set for March 13th, but.
Oh, we've, we were? Okay.
Yeah, we might have put a placeholder for you.
That's what I'm, I'm trying to. Yes, yes, Ms. Pranga did that already. Okay. So the submission date, of course, for this is, was February 23rd. Please submit it before, if it is March 13th.
The missions are due for March 13th.
It is, yeah, it is due, but please submit it by March 9th, no later than March 9th.
We can do that.
Hello, yeah?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay.
We'll try to do it by the end of this week.
Okay, but just.
Send the notes today or tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and please provide a couple letters, just explaining where all the notes and changes have happened. It makes it easier for us to review the plans quickly. So would appreciate that. Okay, so on that good merry note, I'm going to make a recommendation to close. And we will schedule this for hearing on 13th.
Chair Shonda?
Hi.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Hi.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Hi.
Commissioner Yun?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep going.
Do you want to keep going, or should we take a 10 minutes, at least 10 minutes break? Because I think we're going to get a lot of opposition on this. So let's take a 10-minute break and regroup.
Okay. Steve, block it up. Steve, block it up.
Are we to the 10 minute zone? Commissioners? Please come back. Okay.
We ready?
Yep.
Okay, we're back on the record, ladies and gentlemen. This is the borders. Sorry, we're back in the record. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for February 28th, 2023. The next item is the new cases, item number 27, 2022 41BZ 12205 Merrick Boulevard, Queens. Ms. Foladair, is there anyone else with you, Ms. Foladair?
Yes, there should be a Karthy. He's the architect.
John Mugan.
No.
John Mugan.
Oh, his last name?
Karthi Kayan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, sorry.
Forgive me for the pronunciation.
I don't know the pronouns. I don't want to screw it up either, but Karthy's definitely.
Uh, please let him in.
Yeah, and then there are Demi, so you've seen her.
Part of your, Demi is part of your project, okay?
And then, um, Tom Whitney.
Tom Whitney. Okay, well, please, all please join as panelists, please. This is for the applicant team only, please. Those of you who are wishing to speak, uh, will get an opportunity to do so, members of the community. As, as soon as we're finished discussing with the applicants.
Karthi Ken, Shanmogum is here.
Yeah, I see him. I see Demi.
There he is.
Okay, I see Demi.
Okay.
Demi.
I just don't see Tom.
Tom's in the room, but, uh, could you join as panelists, Mr. Whitney?
He's not got, accepting on him.
He's not accepting?
Maybe he's struggling.
Um, can we start without him, Ms. Foladair?
We can, yeah. I don't think he'll have to say anything, honestly. I think Demi and Karthy are.
And Karthi is the architect?
Yeah, and Demi is the traffic engineer.
Okay. Madam Chair, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, let me swear you all in. Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Elise Foladair from Eric Palanic PC on behalf of the applicant. I'm going to start with the easy questions and then move into the other questions, so Karthy and Demi can answer those. So first, you are correct. It is 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM. We will correct it in the statement of facts. Next, uh, easier question is about the spaces. There are currently 14 spaces. It did change a few times because of DOT comments. As Tracy pointed out, there have been comments back and forth, and we'll look through the statement again to confirm that everything says 14 spaces. Um, next, uh, we've done this on other Starbucks and other, um, drive-throughs before. We will add a sign about keeping the radio down before you enter, uh, the drive-through. Uh, Starbucks has already approved another sign on another application, and we will use a similar sign. Um, and then the next question, I'm going to turn over to Karthy, uh, the three questions he's going to answer about the fence, lighting, and the landscaped area slash trash enclosure question.
Okay.
All right, uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Elise. So regarding the fence, uh, the, the screening of, uh, New York City zoning allows, um, maximum of eight feet high fence. So we will consider the eight feet high fence and we will coordinate the, uh, the fence material, the specification, and, uh, we will provide that information on our next submission. And, uh, regarding the lighting comment, uh, that I received.
Mr. Shanmogum, Shanmogum, um, I have a question with regards to the fence. They would, we received several different, uh, material. Well, is, are you proposing the BAFTC or are you proposing something else?
So we, we will provide, we will make sure we coordinate the submission on the, our next submission. So the, we will provide the right specification and we will provide the, uh, the study on that material, and we will propose that on our plans.
Okay.
So it's all like line, lines up.
Okay.
Apo- apologies for interrupting. Tom said that he just has not, he never got a request to join as panelist, but he's here. I don't know.
Do you need him?
Uh. I don't know. Depends what questions other people have. He was present at the community board and he does, he is the Starbucks architecture representative.
Okay.
Steve, can you get him in?
Yeah, let's get him in because I think, um, the community board questions would be something that he might be able to respond to.
Yeah, and we were all there, but I think different people have different perspectives, just in case.
Mr. Whitney, can you, um, unmute once you're in?
Apologies for cutting you off, okay.
Okay, Mr. Whitney, um, can I, I'm sorry, excuse me. So, uh, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay, good, great.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Ash.
All right, continuing on, um, regarding the, uh, lighting, uh, Commissioner Shadow's comments. So we, the light poles on the lighting drawing, at the bottom, we have a, uh, lighting schedule that, that depicts, uh, the height of the light pole. It's, it's about 11 feet, and we are proposing a six feet high fence, um, along the property line. And, and there is a shield on the, the light fixture. So between the shield and the fence, there is about like four and a half feet, uh, distance. And, and that's why there is a zero on the other side, but we will reconsider the, uh, the light pole's illumination strength. And, uh, so that the foot candle at the bottom of the ground, so the, the foot candles that you see on our lighting, uh, drawing, it's at ground level, at, at grade level. So the, the fixture is at 11 feet and at grade, whatever the light, uh, illumination level is measured in foot candles, and that's what is shown on the drawing. Uh, but we will consider the, the board's recommendation for the two-foot candle at the property line maximum. Um, so at our next submission, we'll make sure that that information is provided. And also we will draw a section, um, so it's very clear how the light pole and, and the fence interact. So, and why there is no spill to the adjoining property.
How, how big is the shield? Like, it goes from the top down to?
No, it won't go down to a lot, but it just shields the fixture, the, the.
Yeah.
The light itself. So, uh, so the light doesn't go, uh, you know, on the side, it just, it just goes vertically down and on what side it is, uh, it's being exposed. And then, y- you know, obviously it won't go immediately, uh, right below the light fixture, but, um, at a certain distance, what we are measuring at the grade. So obviously that is going to be possible spill. Since we have a fence that, you know, barricades about six feet, the computer recognizes the fence, and it just, um, cuts off that, um, uh, the, the light. So that's why you see a zero on the program. Um, so it, it is the standard program AGI, uh, we all know that's the program everybody uses. So, uh, it, it does that, and, uh, you know, we, we will reconsider that, the, the type of the fixture, and, uh, and, and we will provide you two-foot candles at, at the property line maximum. So we'll, we'll take the board's recommendation on that.
You don't have to worry about the section for the light pole and the fence interacting. Uh, we didn't ask for that, but I just wanted to make sure that, that the shield, my understanding is that the shield is very limited to the size of the.
It's a one foot or so. It's not going down all the way, so.
But we did measurements before. This is FYI. We did measurements before. And from the shield down to the fence, light goes like that. It does, because of the refraction and friction and.
Yeah.
Within the pulse itself. Yes. So, uh, it, you have a release, use it.
Yeah, no, no.
We're giving you a discretion, you just use it.
Yeah, exactly. So we'll, we'll use it now that we're going to have an eight-foot high fence. Obviously, it's going to help, um, the lighting, um, aspect as well, so.
The, the section actually, I'm, I'm going to ask you to submit, is the section for the fence, the eight feet, and the car, which is about 10 feet away from the fence, clear. And just show us the line of sight from that car stereo. Like if that, if the, uh, the speakers are like two feet above, above grade, show us the line of sight traveling to the edge of the fence, the top of the fence, and show us how much, how many disciplines are filtering into the adjacent property to make sure that we, we cover that, the noise that's originating from the car itself, not from the menu board. I, I, I don't have concerns regarding the menu board.
Okay, so we, we'll request the, uh, the, um, the, the sound, uh, experts on that one, so, um, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll provide that information.
I have another question, uh, and in this, uh, somewhere in the plan, I want to make sure you do include, uh, the height of the, the light pole.
It's on the lighting plan. At the bottom, there is a table.
Yeah, it is a schedule. Yes, that's right.
How do you know what? Oh, it says 11 foot. Nah, yes, 11 foot pole mount. Okay, all right.
Are you, are you the one who did the white paper analysis that submitted?
No, that was not me.
Okay, you used a sound expert to do that?
The sound experts, yeah, we had a.
Okay, so he's the one who.
Yeah, he's the one who, he's going to help.
Understood.
Yeah.
And Starbucks all uses that, that white, the paper we give on H, it's called like H some, H double, I have to look what it's called. But it's standard on all Starbucks. They always use the same menu board with the same specs. Yeah.
Yeah, this is what we call it, the white paper. It's used for the menu board, noise analysis. It's not, it's, it's like a hybrid analysis that's done by the manufacturer of that.
Yeah.
Menu board, and if you have the ABC on, and you're certain distance away from the menu board, you don't have to worry about doing the analysis and the line of sight and this kind of like, uh, I wouldn't say sophisticated analysis, but it's more detailed. But for, for the case of the car, not the menu board, the car is just 10 feet away. So if, if the, your sound engineer can just put the car next to the fence, and based on his, his experience, see how much noise would be originating from that car. Let's say 60 disciplines or, or 50 disciplines. And put the line of sight and calculate the distance from the source to the top of the fence and see how much noise is going into the adjacent property and just compare this to the ambient noise. That would be enough for us, or at least for me.
Uh, right, so we, we just need it from the cars that are waiting, uh, on the, not from the menu board. I just want to be clear. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think we did that on one other site, so we'll look into.
Yeah, it was done for another site, right.
Understood. So the next comment is, was regarding the trash enclosure. So, we, we, the trash enclosure was located based on zoning code. And, and the, the requirements of the fifty feet away from the property line. And, and, you know, Commissioner Shadda, you requested that if we can like relocate it to the west. But if we do relocate to the west, it'll have issues with the circulation and the turning radiuses. So we, we did think about it. We, we did try our level best not to have the trash enclosure adjacent to the residential. But based on the, the configuration of the site and the limited, the depth of the site and the width of the site. And the, the, the limited limitations that we have on the, the area. That, that's allowed, that we have to work with. We don't have an option other than to propose it in this, in the location that is proposed. So we are thinking that we can propose additional landscaping behind the, the trash enclosure. And, and we do have a, a eight-feet-high fence, and which is gonna be a solid fence. And, and I think that, that'll satisfy the, and, and the residents. And also, it'll meet the requirements of the zoning.
With, with an eight-feet fence, I, I don't need to, I, I'm not asking you to move the trash enclosure anymore. If you're gonna be adapting the eight-feet fence, because the line of sight. From, from like that, where the buildings, the adjacent residences are located. In order for someone to look and see that the trash enclosure, he needs to be probably at a hundred feet above grade.
That is right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ollie Brown had a question on the trash enclosure.
Yeah, my question really had to do not so much with the line of sight, but rather with the accompanying rodents. That trash enclosures usually have, especially when there's food. So my concern was that the neighbor that will be sharing the lot line with the trash enclosure. Might have an issue with rodent overflow. So how would you address that?
So it's again, solid fence, I, I think should satisfy that issue as well. Because we're proposing, it's not a chain-link fence with a slat. It's actually a solid fence, and it's eight feet high. So any, any vermin has to go past that eight-feet-high fence. And to the other side, I think that, that satisfies that, that issue.
I also believe that we have given you information with other Starbucks's regarding extermination. So we can, in our next submission, provide probably who exterminates and how often they come.
Right, provide an operational plan with regards to rodent control.
Can, can I suggest something on that issue, the rodent? Yeah, if, if you can consult your fence manufacturer. If, if it's possible that they can sell or, if they sell a cap or so. At the top of that fence, and you can install it, like, like that, at the top. The fence is like this, and the cap is like that, a rodent wouldn't be able to go up and then do that. I, I believe that would resolve it, if that, and, and I'm, I'm aware that some of the manufacturers. Provide that kind of capping at the top of the fence. If this is possible. I, I, I do believe that it's gonna be like the mission impossible for the rodents to go, to go around that.
Okay.
So it would be a cap on top of the fence in addition to Starbucks. Maintenance, robot, rodent maintenance plan. It's both of them. It's not either or, it's both of them.
And then, I think, oh, and then, can, also, Karthy, I think the last thing is adding landscaping. Commissioner Brown, Ollie Brown talked about to the west.
Yeah, we, we will in, increase landscaping. We will beautify the site.
Okay, thank you. And then the last set of questions, I believe, is for Demi about the left turn sign from Commissioner Shadda. And addressing.
Before Demi gets on board, I know Chris Yun, our commis, sorry, Commissioner Yun. On about the, you know, the height of the fence extending from six foot to eight foot. So, you know, I want Commissioner Yun to have this opportunity to ask any questions. With regards to the fence design or location that can help address some of your concerns.
Oh, thank you, Chair. I think, I mean, it, it is as of right, as long as it's measured eight feet from grade, and it's a level site. So probably won't have much issue there. If it makes the rest of the board feel more confident that the sound and rodent proofing would be improved. I can't really argue against that. It's just an argument for the, the light that goes to those yards. Because the existing fence appears to be more like five or six feet right now. So it would just be a little bit higher, and you know, it's south facing. But I'm not gonna contest the technical advantages that might be, yeah, provided. I did wanna just make one clarification regarding the consideration for the two-foot candles. I just wanna make it clear that that is a maximum allowed at the property line by the board. Not a standard for a minimum amount of light that needs to be provided. The ideal is to not shed any light onto your adjacent neighbors unless there's some concern for safety by the owner. Who wants to include some allowance for illumination along that property line. So you show zero, and that's, and I, I understand why. And I know that there are shields that you can get for that particular light fixture to make it effectively zero. So I just wanna make sure the intent is understood. We don't, we're not asking you to increase the foot candles along the property line.
No, decrease the foot candle. That's, right now, it's like three point some. We wanna bring it down to two point also.
Right, okay, just wanted to make.
Yeah, I think we're trying to be realistic in keeping with the safety and security factors. That go into providing some minimum lighting. And what we have seen, studies have shown that maximum of two-foot candle is sufficient to provide a safety and security element. Especially along the perimeter. But as Commissioner Yun very correctly pointed out, it's the maximum. And if you want to go less than that, yes, go forth. But sometimes reality doesn't result in a perfect zero, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Fulladair.
I'm going back to Demi, if you wanna address Commissioner Shadda's comment and how you're addressing DOT comments.
Sure, absolutely. Good afternoon, everyone. Demi Process with Stonefield Engineering. Yeah, so there were many traffic questions here. I think the only thing that came up was the request for potentially prohibiting left turns off of Basley. And, you know, ultimately, we don't believe that to be necessary just because the site operates with two full movement driveways on Basley Boulevard today. So we're consolidating that to one driveway. So, you know, that's an existing condition. That's not a new, new, you know, movement. That's being proposed as part of this application. Also, that driveway is, you know, only gonna be servicing vehicles not utilizing the drive-through. So vehicles who are parking and then, you know, choose to leave the site either on Basley Boulevard or on Merrick. But as I believe it was mentioned previously, the large majority of traffic that we're expecting to come to the site will be utilizing the drive-through. So we're only expecting a small portion of traffic coming to the site to even be utilizing that Basley Boulevard driveway altogether. So, you know, ultimately, we don't, we don't think that that left turn is gonna create any new issues. It's an existing condition. So we would just like to leave that as is.
I'll also say that I also made a left turn out of that curb cut when I was there visiting the site to get onto Merrick Boulevard. So I did it safe and sound. I, I thought that Basley was actually quite easy to turn left on, too. If that helps Commissioner Shadda any concerns.
I think I'm gonna leave that discussion for DOT to weigh in. We didn't. And it seems as Ms. Benke pointed out, so far, based on all the back and forth iteration. Iterations with DOT, we have not, this particular issue has not been raised. And right, and you said the Starbucks business model is ten percent is really the pickup window. And those are the likely possible vehicles that will be using that drive-through lane. To exit onto Basley.
Exactly. But yeah, I think besides that, we're just working through, you know, it was mentioned, we got more DOT comments on February twenty-first. So we're just working through those right now. None of the comments are real deal breakers on our end. It's just a couple modifications. They are requesting more signage at the driveways just to ensure more traffic control. So, yeah, I think we're in the process of dealing with those right now. I think we'll have those addressed in a couple of weeks. But, you know, we can discuss timeline altogether.
So is DOT proposing more signage, traffic signage on the site?
Yeah, so the same do-not-enter signs that they wanted on Basley Boulevard. They also want that on the drive-through exit on Merrick. And they wanna make sure all the proper stop, you know, signage and markings are provided on, for all driveways.
Okay. Right, typically, we do see a big stop sign marked on the pavement. So I do have one question. The parking space number three. Given where it's located with the exit and entrance, is that? Safe? Condition, given that it's right next to the exit and the. Entrance? This is, this is one of the three accessory parking spaces, sorry, number three.
I can share the plan if it helps. I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on. And since we have additional parking, if somebody doesn't think it's safe, we can take it off. Here, I should probably make it bigger.
Yes, if you could. It's the number three park, accessory parking space, which, which is right next to the exit. And the way the curb cut is drawn, it seems a portion of the car would be kind of. I'm not sure what that contour, is that a contour line? Or is that, that is where the curb cut is, next to the tree?
Yeah, the, the curb is right at the property line, adjacent to the property line, within the property line. And, and the, the, it, D O B allows an overhang. We, we are proposing an eighteen-feet full, a full-size stall for the parking. That's, it's a sixteen and a half with a one and a half feet overhang is allowed by, by the D O B code. But we, we could revisit that parking space.
Yeah, it's, so, you know, I'm just keeping in mind that this would be used for that ten percent. And of that ten percent, I'm assuming about. Probably less, just to be, it would be five percent, let's say, that would be exiting on Merrick. And. And. So I, I just wanna make sure there, it would not result in. But that's for you to kind of figure out whether that from a business model point of view. You know, it's, it's a good thing or not, and if you need to have that parking space. If not, I would say convert that into a nice, another green open space with planting.
Okay, thank you. And then, I don't know if we're ready to transition, but the last comment, I just, for the community board question. Since I think so many people are here from the community board, we're gonna defer to them to tell you what, you know, they. Experience at the community board and their, and why their opinions are their opinions.
Okay, before we move on to that, I just am looking at the. Are street trees possible along Merrick and Basley? Maybe not Basley, but around Merrick, is it possible?
We, we, we have to review the overhead wires, or if, if there is any. And, and we had to see all the utilities. And if, if there are no conflicts, and if there, there is parks department requirement. You need to plant the tree minimum of forty feet from the intersection and other requirements like were asked to be set back from. Certain utilities, so we, we will review the, all the utilities, and, and we will consider.
Okay.
We'll make a note for that street tree.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for, for the applicants, commissioners? Okay, let's move on to the public place.
Sorry, pull up the screen, Steve. So the case, forget it. So the case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-two forty-one V Z. One twenty-two oh five Merrick Boulevard, Queens. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six. Or outside the safe limits, our toll-free number is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter webinar ID number eight one four five nine zero one two eight five two, and enter the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're in, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to be able to speak if you are calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already, and wish to discuss this case, two one twenty-two oh five Merrick Boulevard, Queens. Please raise your Zoom hand, which is a small hand on the bottom of your screen. Once you are permitted in, you will have three minutes and wish to discuss your issues. So there are two, Reverend Thorbs and Ms. Cruz. So can we go back to the other screen, or you wanna keep it until the alarm goes off?
Let's go back to the other screen because we do know Reverend.
Has been patiently waiting.
Yes.
Reverend Thorbs, could you?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting.
You don't need to be sworn in. It's only for the applicants.
Okay.
Thank you for waiting. We, it's, it is part of our process. We'd rather hear a public testimony related to the case that we are going to hear and not out of order. Because it makes it easier for us to understand the situation.
Thank you so much for this opportunity, and, and thank you. It's been interesting watching this process. This is the first time. I am Reverend Carleen Thorbs. I am the chairperson of Community Board Twelve, which at hand is over four hundred thousand souls. Thirty-six different languages are spoken here within my district. And on this call with me were a number of Community Board Twelve members, Community Board Twelve residents. As well as Community Board Thirteen that's also on here. Our issue with this Starbucks, and the reason why it was voted down unanimously by thirty-three members. Is we were looking for the full Starbucks experience, which means come in, sit in, that sit in, sitting down in the indoor cafe. Still having the drive-through and having seating on the outside. We're not talking about a, a, a great amount of seatings. I've been a, a member of Starbucks or a Starbucks person since twenty-fourteen. So I go to a number of Starbucks. Case in point, the one on the Van with Expressway. It is extremely small, but yet it has seating. They drive up, they park, they go inside. Some of the things that bothered us about this particular Starbucks and how it was presented to us. They came to us and they began with, when we told them, we did not want the drive-through. Because they offered that to Community Board Thirteen, which is just a few blocks away from Community Board Twelve. Where this Starbucks is going to be. We don't want that. That is not what we are looking for in our community. We understand from their conversation, which we have recorded, that they went into another community and asked them what they wanted to see. And because Richmond Hill decided that they wanted a drive-through, they said that they will put it in our community. And that is not what we are asking for. That whole ten-car queue, fourteen-car queue, no matter how way you look at it. On Merrick Boulevard, there is a red bus lane that runs from Farmers Boulevard all the way into downtown Jamaica. On that bus lane, there will be cameras. On the buses, there will be cameras. We only have one driving lane on Merrick Boulevard, and that is the extreme left lane. When cars are going to make a decision to go into that, that Starbucks driveway, they're gonna do one of many things. They're gonna go straight from the right, the left lane, straight across the right lane, straight across the bus lane. And then whatever's in the queue will back up and come back out on the street, which will be in the bus lane. Which is also used as an emergency lane for NYPD and the ambulances. Over the weekend, I had the opportunity to be in Farmingdale, and I experienced this particular type of Starbucks. And again, it was a. And again, it was a when you walked inside, it was space that was being just wasted. Wasted space inside that could have had seating. The cars in the queue went out the driveway, out the back of the parking lot, into a mall parking lot, back down to a driveway where the cars come into a mall. So it does cause a problem with um cars backing up and going all the way through. Furthermore, I've looked on um I've dug around on uh Facebook and other areas, Starbucks is being sued time and time again because of this model. There are other communities that are upset about the very same model because the drive-through is causing the traffic to back out on the street. Basely and Merrick Boulevard, that intersection is already congested. A hundred and twentieth Avenue, which is behind the building, is where a bus comes down and makes a left turn. We already have problems with congestion with the bus making the left turn because if it doesn't make the complete turn, that's the bus right in the middle. Nothing goes anywhere until the Merrick Boulevard traffic moves, and then traffic has to move again on Basely Boulevard. We are also going to be receiving a colbarium on the outskirts of Roy Wilkins Park. That too will be another added to the traffic that's gonna be flowing in the same direction as going toward Merrick Boulevard. When they come out of the colbarium, they will not be making a left-hand turn. They will be making a right-hand turn, which is gonna funnel right down past the Starbucks as well and that driveway, along with the bus turning off of a hundred and twentieth Avenue. So as you can see, we are, we're already going to have a overwhelming traffic issue on top of compounding on top of what's going on. We understand the wanting to be in that location because of Roy Wilkins Park and because of the many events and the thousands of people that come to the park, but we did offer them other locations and solutions, which was right down the street on Guy Brewer in Basely, where there was another gas station. The the lot is absolutely empty and they can build fresh. They can make their Starbucks. They could have a a small seating area on the inside. They can still have the a drive-through that feeds in one way, lets out on the other way, and still have parking in the parking lot. It's right next door to Popeyes, which also has the drive-through, which also has seating inside its store. So it's doable. All we are asking for Starbucks is to work with us. We also offered them the location of um Rochdale Village. Over twenty-five thousand people live in Rochdale Village. There is open commercial space in Rochdale Village as we speak. And yet they don't want to look at that space at all. There's a number of open commercial spots in Rochdale Vi- Village. And Rochdale has free parking. Twenty-five thousand people and they will not um, they will not take that into consideration. So these are just a few of the of the um situations that we are looking at within our community. We want folks to come in and be good neighbors. We feel if they come in in this manner and build what they want to build, the same way they told Community Board Thirteen, we're gonna build this, take the money, and go out further in Long Island and build something better. That's not acceptable to us. We deserve the full Starbucks experience. I shouldn't have to drive into Long Island to go sit down at a cafe or to have a meeting over a cup of coffee. I want to be able to do it in my own community. I live here. I've been born and raised here all my life. This is what we desire. This is what the community is looking forward to, a sit-down cafe. If they cannot do it there, which we don't believe that they cannot do it, then they need to look at all the other locations that we have offered them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. Um.
Ms. Cruz? Oh, I'm sorry. Were you finished, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Cruz?
Good afternoon. My name is Tanya Cruz. I am a member of the New York State Queens Traffic Safety Board, a ten-year-plus member of Community Board Thirteen, and more importantly, a fifty-five-year-plus resident of Southeast Queens. I just want to go over some key points that the good Reverend Thorbs brought to your attention. Number one, a green light and a go-ahead of this application by the BSA can be best described and summed up as ill-advised and negligent. After years of study, a pilot program and the pilot program becoming permanent, MTA and DOT created a rapid bus corridor to significantly decrease the residents' first leg of their daily commute. Starbucks drive-through-only facility impacts and reverses the gains that we made. Starbucks peak hour customer is not satisfied by the amount of cars able to queue up off-road, nor takes into the account the amount of customers departing, causing an overflow onto Merrick Boulevard. This creates an aggressive conflict between drivers and buses moving through and traveling the corridor. Number two, quality of issues, quality of life issues. We see this applicant's inattentive and neglectful of our community needs by building a drive-through facility only steps away from our two thousand-plus-acre Roy Wilkins Park, Black Spectrum Theater, and the enormous foot traffic seen along this corridor. And lastly, the negative environmental impact of the surrounding homes due to the large and consistent idling of cars is inconscionable. I am requesting that this application be denied by the City Board of Standards and Appeals. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Cruz. Um, next speaker, please.
Anyone else? Oh. Anyone else?
I thought there was someone else.
Oh, this, uh, you're registered as uh Reverend Thorbs, though, or um you're to state your name?
Michelle Keller.
Okay, Ms. Keller, go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I concur with what the Madam Chair said. I am a twenty-eight-year member of Community Board. I was the former transportation chair. Now I'm the first vice chair. And like the Reverend said and Tanya Cruz said, the Starbucks coming in, I don't really see how it will benefit this community. They're adjacent, right across the street from the the site, well, is a park for children. And as they both stated, that becomes a congested area, especially during peak hours and on weekends. And I'm concerned about that. Now, I know that I've heard you speak about the site itself and the fencing and the lighting. Um, I don't know if anyone else is on the, the residents that live uh contiguous to that site because that's one of the reasons why we considered we could not go along with it because they had major concerns. I would like to know how their property values will be affected. Now, I heard you also say about capping a fence and rodents. I don't know how rodents stay, especially mites. They can go in any direction. They can go up, down, under, what have you. So I don't know if that's the 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 penancia either. Also, I'd like to know if DOT even conferred with the police department to see what is the accident ratio in that area. We, and we did offer them other sites. And I don't recall them getting back to us saying that they looked at it and that they would consider them. So I would have to say I am not on board with this. We've, I voted against it. And I would like for them to seriously consider other sites that would be more beneficial to them and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. The next speaker, you has your hand up. Uh, Steve, you want to let her in? Um, and state your name. I don't know if you can change your name. Everyone's marked in as Reverend Thorbs. I don't know why, but okay. Um, can you unmute ma'am?
Hi, are you talking to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, I don't know how that happened either, because anyway, um I guess we used her link. We used her link. That's what.
Oh, okay. All right.
Please state your name. My name is Renee Hill. I'm a Community Board Twelve member as well. And um, I also voted um uh no to this um proposal. Um, there's um, I've been a lifetime resident of Queens. We denied this proposal in November of twenty twenty-two, so I heard them mention or you have mentioned there's updated plans. Uh, we believe we should see them again. Uh, also, um so this, because this seems to be changes since then. And right now we have a gas station, uh, the only one in the area. So I heard someone say, you know, well, it's better than a gas station. We need that gas station right now. So um, maybe we can get a gas station, a BP with coffee in it or something, but we need a gas station right there if they're not gonna give us the Starbucks with the sit-down. So I agree with uh my other community board uh members that uh this should be denied, and if not, then we should just leave it open until we can work this out with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Could you take your hand down, please, Ms. Um, Hill? Thank you so much. Anyone else other than who have spoken already? Anyone else wishing to speak that have not spoken before? Okay, Madam Chair?
Okay. Um, thank you all very much for your participation and uh stating your reasons. Um, it wasn't very clear from the community board package submission. Uh, we appreciate your participation. Um, I I think what I do want to note is uh what business go there as of right, it's uh, that is not in our control or in our purview. Uh, what is uh before us is just a special permit associated with the drive-through. Um, and uh, and as part of the findings, um DOT does review the analysis, traffic analysis, and uh and we rely on them uh on the expert agency to inform us um uh in terms of the movement, how that uh would uh uh work with the existing traffic flow and existing traffic condition. And we rely on uh DOT's expert uh on that uh on that part. Um, so again, um, stay tuned. This is just the first hearing we have had. And I would ask the applicant's representative to share with the community board which uh of any change uh of the latest revised plan that we are reviewing and in and any subsequent revised plans uh that would come through based on our comments and based on DOT's comments um to uh share those with uh with the community board so that you're fully informed of of what is before the board.
And I'm sorry, they did, we submitted to you in February because you had a list of questions, but on the last time we met with them, we did share the same plans that you have, but we submitted them to you in February because you had a bunch of other questions we addressed. So we will share going forward, though, any changes that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Just letting everybody clarify.
So you did submit this revised plan in February?
We submitted it to you in February, but when we met with them, the last time we met with them, that was based on the last set of DOT com- now we have more DOT comments. So they saw the set you're looking at now, and then we submitted them to you with other questions and paperwork you asked for in your notice of comments. And then in the next rendition, we'll submit to them as well and you again, and everyone will get them on the same date.
Okay. All right. So, thank you. Please, going forward, do share with uh all the revised documents with the community board. Thank you. Um. Commissioners, um, any questions, follow-up questions for um the applicant? I do want to hear from uh Mr. Whitney because you are the Starbucks representative.
Sure. Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I I think.
Do you want to address, you want him to address the comments from the community?
What specifically, yeah.
Yes, I would like you to address the comments from the community um in terms of would what the community is asking, is it at all viable to have some seating area of sort, whether it's outdoors and or indoors or combination?
Sure, um, so Starbucks.
Though I I I'm just gonna say this is not something that we are the driver on this because that's not the use that, we are not questioning the use. This is just a question I'm posing to you. And would say, though, in the best interest of serving the community, um, more you care for the community, the more better your business is. Just a simple business model.
Correct. Okay, to to explain just my position and who I am to Starbucks. I'm a longtime consultant for Starbucks, working for architectural and site plan development uh in different aspects, and we're working in conjunction with this landlord team uh to come up with this plan that you're seeing before you. Um, I have been looking a long time in this area, so they have investigated sites. I can't speak to what deals or deals I haven't, I haven't been involved in, but this site came to us and they saw an opportunity here uh with the owner to redevelop this site. The site is very narrow, as you can see in the plan, and that provide, that is uh due to the constraints of the existing site, is how they came up with the idea to use their model uh uh of a drive-through-only sort of platform. The idea of that platform is to by limiting the amount of uh streams of service, you can focus on the drive-through more uh and move cars quicker. Uh, when we were asked regarding seating, what we could do to try to provide seating, we did look at the existing site plan, and we did attempt to uh explore moving the building further back uh from the parking area to create a small area in the front, but what that did is it um reduced the amount of cars in queue. Um, and as actually, the people have been testifying today, they're concerned about traffic and DOT is concerned about traffic, and this is ongoing conversations. If we can't make a certain amount of queuing here, um DOT, you know, we need to get DOT on our side and make the queuing that they're asking us for. So moving the building further back to create a seating area created a problem with DOT uh in our expect, in our expectations from the comments we will get from DOT based on our experience with DOT. So we did investigate that, and that's how we got to where we are right now.
So just so I understand, so the building, if you move it further towards Basely uh to accommodate seating area, you you lose the uh the drive-through. Because you need to have the alignment of the menu board to the pickup window, and it's that distance.
Right, and and DOT is asking us to exceed the ten-car. It it typically, when we're with DOT, they're asking us to extend, e- exceed the ten-car minimum typically seen in New York City for uh a drive-through queue. They want us to have more cars, and we're trying to accommodate the comments that we have been getting recently from them. And so by moving the building, we know we put ourselves in a situation where we're not meeting that requirement that has been routinely asked from us.
Um, just taking uh Reverend Thor's uh question like, um, and I have not been to any of these facilities, so I really don't have a um spatial ex- experience of the interior. Um. Would uh it are, is there a way some of these alignments of the, like, I'm looking at the floor plan, like the washer and all of those, if they were to move um in a different location, could seating be located along that uh frontage? Al- along the portion where it says wash area, work area, things like that?
Right, so so basically what the drive-through um model becomes is if you would go into a regular cafe, there'd be basically another room next to this room um adjacent, and the counter would be open. So basically, due to equipment proximities and the aisle widths they require, the width of the building pretty much becomes their functional kitchen that they need to have. So by moving it, it 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 breaks their flow. They're get, they're not gonna be able to produce uh in an efficient manner. And that's, so basically, this building is really just their kitchen without without the rest of their typical building.
Okay.
Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, uh Commissioner Sheta.
Yeah, I I I'm looking at the site plan, and I'm I'm not sure, if, I have a question regarding the um size of the building. Is it possible to, like, if if it's possible to enlarge the building a little bit, not move it, just enlarge it uh towards uh Basely? Like add add like a another piece to the building and then rearrange the spaces and and account for some some seating area in in the back? If if you want to initiate my screen and explain my point, I could.
No, you don't need to share the screen. I think we we understand what, I think that's what my question um was also to Mr. Whitney is A, uh, could it be shifted? B, could the interior be the uh rearranged in a way to accommodate seating, uh, whether that's? seating, uh, whether that's along uh the side of the building or towards the back, even to get to the back of the building? Um, that would either have to be through the building, which would disrupt the flow of the business operation within. Or can it be provided, somebody does the takeout, and they want to sit outside? Can they, uh, can, can a space be provided outside for somebody to sit there um behind the building?
Yeah, but I I'm not talking about shifting the building. I'm talking about allowing additional.
I I understand what you're saying. You're right. It's the same thing. It's a, 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 allowing an additional space to sit, but it will not be in the flow of the movement of people. So that's the thing, the way what Mr. Whitney is saying, where the kitchen in relation to wash area is, it's critical. If that is severed, then that affects the flow of the delivery and the production of the food. So if those remain where where it is, then it uh extending the building would require somebody to go outside the building and then go and sit there. I I don't know, maybe with Mr. Whitney, I'm not understanding it.
No, I think you're correct. The, the point of service is, has to be in line at the end of the building where the drive through window is because the production works as a line. So if the, if people are running back and forth to serve on both ends of the spectrum, then you, in a constrained space, that becomes it it just doesn't work. Uh, everyone will be running into each other in the, in the, in the kitchen space. Um, they, they will have one point of service at the front where they have the pickup window and the for the drive through and pedestrians in the front, and the, and it works basically of service spaces at the back, and then a storage and production straightforward to the window. Um, that that's, it's an engine. It's, it's how it's produced, and that, that's what it works. As far as if we could do it some, a small area behind the seating, I can talk with Starbucks if they're open to that. I don't think they would be against it if that's something that would uh, please the community and the board if we, but it would be uh, admittedly a bit disjointed from the point of service. They, they would probably have to circulate through the public sidewalk to that somehow and cross the drive through lane, which is their hesitancy uh there, is that you're now creating a pedestrian crossing at a drive through lane. Uh, so there's inherent uh safety issues with that.
Is, is the exit at the end of the building is just for the employees or it's for the customers as well?
There's no interior.
There is no customer, there is no customer inside the building. It's, it's only for the employee.
Correct.
And, you know, I just kind of want to, I mean, we are asking these questions because the Community Board ha- has asked, and as I stated earlier, what, what is before this board is only the drive through. The as of right use of an eating and drinking establishment and how it functions, that is not what's before us. So uh, the questions that we are asking, it's more because the Community Board has asked that, and it's in the, in your business interest model to uh, to um, to keep your community uh members happy. But I'm not saying that's an obligation at our end. It's just something for you to explore and consider.
Yep, I, and I hope my testimony at least gives you some insights to how, how we got to where we are and and why we're doing what we're doing here.
Right, and I think if it, if in your cover letter, uh, Ms. Folletta, you can respond to the questions that has been raised by the Community Board and provide an answer um, uh, for the record, that would be very helpful. Um, because we all need to be mindful of what is before us and uh, and what considerations can you give to address communities' bo- boards' concern in a manner that works? But that, and 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 it's complying with the zoning and does not, and then we have to weigh that in, in reviewing the drive through.
Understood.
Understood.
Uh, Reverend Thorbs, um, if you wanna submit additional testimony, you may. Uh, we can't take more testimony right now.
Right, I strongly recommend suggest uh Reverend Thorb and all the Community Board members, we do A, not only do we want and appreciate your participation at the community uh a- at the public hearing, we also strongly suggest that you send us letters. We read every letter that comes to us, email, letters, whatever. Um, I think uh, uh, there is a particular link that you have to send the submit to.
Submit at bsa.nyc.gov. I can have the project manager reach out to you.
Yes, um, we'll do that, and you can send your written testimony. Any com- comments or questions that you want to add to, um, please do share. We review them, and also, uh, we will I believe we also shared that with the applicant, right, Ms. Matthias? These, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, uh, Ms. Folletta, do you want to provide any follow up um, to all the questions that's been raised by the community members?
Um, I guess I, I'll just add to what I've already said, is I'll make sure to copy the Community Board on our next submission. And I will add this discussion into my next submission, so it's on the record, written. And we appreciate your feedback, and we will do what we can do based on the limitations of our site. So thank you so much.
And not that, i- it's just something for Starbucks to think about when you are looking at sites, like, it's not just, should not be just a drive through business model. There there are those who love the Starbucks experience, and you want to combine both. And uh, you know, you should look into that. This is something that you should take to the Starbucks corporation and have them ponder. It's.
I should also add that not at our first land use meeting, but at the full board meeting, a Starbucks representative, multiple Starbucks representatives did attend that Community Board meeting. They're not here today, but they did attend one of the Community Board meetings.
Okay, all right. Please let them know.
Um, anything else?
Um, anything else at?
With respect to this case? No, that's it?
Right, no, I think we uh, there's a lot of things. Um, I think we raised a lot of comments. The applicant knows what they, what they need to do. You need to I mean, one is you look at the little bit on your end, the business model, and can that be addressed? And then if that requires a change in the plan, you look into that. If not, whatever questions we have raised, regardless of whether there's a change in the plan um or not, those need to be looked into with regards to the height of the fence, the lighting, landscaping, um, at additional signage, which with regards to radios and noise coming from the site. Um.
And the DOT comments.
The DOT comments, right. And the, and that is one of the driving back, no pun intended. It's, it's one of the driving factors of this whole finding. Um, and how long will it take for you? Um, I mean, you also have to respond to DOT's comments, right?
So I think as Demi said, we only need a, like, not a lot of time, a few weeks for that, but I don't know if you wanna uh, two weeks, but I I don't know if you wanna allow any specific amount of time for DOT to then respond, so.
Yes.
So we only need about two weeks to submit something to them, but whatever you think, based on what your experience with, how much time DOT needs will take.
Yeah, at least a month DOT will take, so we are looking at probably April. Late. Yeah, late April. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, April, late April, early May. That's kind of what I'm looking at.
Understood.
Okay. Um, but for the Community Board members, uh, this is a, this, this case will continue as a continued hearing. And we cannot finalize the date of that next hearing, but we, we are speculating it would be sometime late April or early uh May. The late April hearing is uh April twenty fourth, twenty fifth, and the late, uh, and the early May hearing is May eighth or nine. And the subsequent May hearing is May twenty second, twenty third. So any one of those three days is we will try to schedule this application for follow up hearing. In the meantime, the, the applicant will submit prior to the hearing, the applicant will submit a revised set of documents. And as Ms. Folletta said, those dr- documents will be sh- shared with the Community Board, so that you will have the opportunity to review the documents that we will be reviewing prior to the hearing. And um, the commu- uh, and at that time, Ms. Folletta will also notify you when the hearing date has been scheduled. Please do send that notification to the Community Board.
Yeah.
Uh, all the elected officials as to the next hearing date. And so you will know by then which of these three dates this item has been scheduled for hearing. And you can send a letter, you uh emails, and also appear um at the hearing. So um, so you, you will have the opportunity to review and give your consideration.
And I just wanna add that we submit three weeks ahead of time, so you'll have three weeks notice.
Right.
Just wanted to add that, that's how much time when we submit.
And you can also go to our uh website to see when um, on those days, when the item has been scheduled. We s- schedule it uh on a Monday or a Tuesday, so it could be while the, the applicant will not know exactly uh, whether it would be on a Monday or Tuesday, but um, the schedule would be posted on our website at least two weeks uh before, uh, one week before, where you will know exactly on which day, excuse me. Oh, excuse me, I've got a on which day um, the item would be heard, so that you don't have to wait for two um, wa- on Monday and on Tuesday. Okay.
All right. Um, thank you, everyone, for participation. So this concludes the public hearing for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
Thank you all for your participation. Really appreciate it. And your patience, especially Reverend Thor. And um, I also want to let our project manager know. Um, you, uh, you may also want to let the Community Board know as to which day the hearings, the item is gonna be uh scheduled. So we will have you notified both ways, from our end and from the applicant's end.
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
And thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Have a good day. Bye.
Thank you.